I'm waiting for Brianna to turn on my clock. No clock? You got nineteen hundred and one years? Well, it looks like seven o'clock to me, ladies and gentlemen, so. I will call the Lakewood City Council's special meeting to order for this Monday, January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll for our special meeting?
Councilmember Bokey.
Present.
Councilmember Bransetter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson has been excused. You have a quorum.
Very good, and it looks like we're going straight into new business. Mr. Cawfield, so for that we have, uh, motion twenty-twenty dash zero-six. We need to pronounce the motion or have the clerk read the motion first and...
Motion number two thousand and twenty dash zero-six authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Parametrics, Inc. in an amount not to exceed one million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars for design services related to JBLM North Access Improvement Project.
Thank you very much, and for this we have some opening commentary by Mr. Bucic, our Public Works Director.
Good evening. Um, after listening to me for half an hour wax poetically on this last week, um, I was not proposing to drive you through all the details again, but instead to be prepared to answer any questions you may have based on the conversation last week as a scope of work.
Very good. We had a nice session with Mr. Bucic last week at our study session. Are there any other questions council may have from Mr. Bucic at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt motion twenty-twenty dash zero-six?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Simpson, seconded by Councilmember Moss, that we adopt motion twenty-twenty dash zero-six. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion twenty-twenty dash zero-six has been adopted. There being no further business to come before the council during the special meeting, I'll declare the special meeting adjourned. We now move to the Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for Monday, January twenty-seven, two thousand twenty. It does say, uh, call to order, and I suppose we don't need to do roll call. We've done that, so we'll just zip right into items for discussion. The first item we have for discussion is the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition update, and for this we're pleased to have our own council member, Mary Moss, and the LMCC members.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Um, it is my pleasure to introduce to you, uh, well, in fact, I'm gonna let them go around and introduce themselves. I'll start. I'm Mary Moss, a Lakewood's, uh, member of the Lakewood City Council and president and CEO for the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, LMCC.
I'm Les Bunton, a detective with the Lakewood Police Department and a secretary for the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition.
And this is Laura Marie. I'm the Associate Deputy Director at the Lakewood Family YMC and the Vice President of LMCC.
Hi, I'm Abby Manning. Um, I am a councilperson. I just got adopted in the day and I'm on to different, I work for Harpers and Fagin, and, um, we also do, um, inclusion for our pride union service, um, work well, possibly to be a part of that.
Very good.
Oh, there we go.
Well, imagine, okay.
Good evening. I'm Kimmy Irene again, a very enthusiastic and caring person out of the community here in Lakewood. I currently serve as a board member on the LMCC. I also am the chair, one of the main, uh, overseeing the committees that we have, and my main, um, thrust is the events that happen through LMCC.
Fantastic. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Moss. This is...
And, and then I, I should disclose that I'm also a member of the LMCC board, and I currently serve as a treasurer.
Fantastic.
I'll start with a bit of background. Um, the council approved the, uh, as we know, the council approved this, a vision statement in two thousand fifteen, where we talked about the appreciation of the Lakewood diversity, and we really do appreciate the diversity we have in our, in our community. And as I reviewed our, our statement, uh, I realized that we continually talk about how we appreciate our diversity, but I didn't see anything that we were doing to show our appreciation. So from that, I, we came up, uh, so that I came up in two thousand sixteen, I sent out an email, uh, asking for interest in a coalition, and I sent it to the police department, the fire department, the Boys and Girls Club, and other organizations in the community, and the response was overwhelming. There were so many people that were interested in celebrating the diversity that we have in our community. So in two thousand sixteen, October, I set up the first meeting, and I'm happy to say that Detective Bunton was at the first meeting, and he'd been with me ever since, and he is now serving as our secretary. He tried to get away, but we put the gun. But thanks to the Lakewood, uh, city, thanks to the City of Lakewood, Harborstone Credit Union, and, uh, we were able to move forward this, in two thousand eighteen, which you will hear from as we go around the table and we talk about what we do. Currently, we are a five-oh-one-C-three. Uh, during our rebranding, uh, we came up with the new logo, and that was, we are very proud of. It was, it was produced by a high school student in Arizona, but we worked through her grandmother here to get it done, so we're real pleased with that. Um, we have six board members and two committee members, and that's a bit of the background. Uh, do you have any questions before we go forward? So we're going, the next is the treasurer's report.
This, this, the city, uh, for twenty-nineteen, um, did enter into a contract with LMCC for an amount not to exceed two thousand dollars, um, uh, that, that asked for us to do, um, uh, three things. One is to, to, to have a presence and provide information in that at Summerfest. Two, to do an inclusionary event, uh, that connected the youth and police, um, and later, and that, that we would, uh, engage with the, um, Human Services Coalition. And so, uh, we, we did those. This slide shows a breakdown of, uh, of, of, of what we invoiced the city for under that contract, uh, up to, you know, we didn't, uh, spend, you know, all two thousand dollars, but we, these were, these were things that supported those three things. This is not the entire budget of the organization, but, uh, and, uh, if you're interested in what we did, what we did with city money, this is it.
Now that you guys are a five-oh-one-C-three, I assume there's plans to get further sponsorships or donations for programming activities?
I, I, I guess, I guess that I would s- s- say that we're, uh, the, you know, our, 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 our total revenue in twenty-nineteen through memberships, uh, sponsorships from, from, from others, and that, uh, was, uh, about, uh, twelve thousand four hundred dollars.
Fantastic.
Also in the process of, uh, growing our membership, and from our membership, we will add to the board because we want the board to be very diverse, so we decided that would be the best way to do that. So at this point, we're gonna sh- go to, yeah, we're gonna go to, uh, some, uh, events from Summerfest and the Farmers Market.
Yeah, so we participated in several events, two of which, um, the first one being Summerfest, uh, and we thought that one way to, uh, get folks excited about coming over to our table, we know that, um...
Candy does it, yes, exactly.
So we actually did, um, Skittles.
Only our city manager would learn this.
Taste the Rainbow, right? So, uh, we wanted to, um, sort of celebrate the rainbow that is in Lakewood. So, you're welcome. So Taste the Rainbow, so this is actually one of the grand old program table, and they made a new conversation about diversity, what diversity is and all the different elements. Uh, you can see, um, we brought a little sample of the board that we use to, to talk about what diversity is, the different dimensions. So, you know, oftentimes people think race first, and that's not only what we're talking about. We're talking about lots of different elements, and so it was just great to be able to engage in the conversation, you know. Core, we have an individual, then we have self-identification, because we always wanna make sure that there's that flexibility for folks. Then we have things like race and ethnicity and age and some of those kinds of things, and then as you move out, you get, uh, things like, um, work experience, educational backgrounds, some of those kinds of things, um, at the, at the extent of, of the circle. And so, we were able to talk to folks about, about very different elements of diversity and what they identify with most. Uh, and a lot of folks identified, uh, we had most people identifying with, uh, a military status, uh, which of course is no surprise in, in our community, uh, as well as, uh, multiracial. Uh, so we, we had posters, and folks were able to kind of put up those, those posters and, as they talked to us, uh, about how they identified. And, um, and really what we were finding is that people, people want to be able to connect with others, um, around, especially around food. Uh, so we know that food brings people together, and it's often a way that different cultures are, are celebrating, uh, usually around food. And so, really just trying to find, moving forward in our work, trying to find what some of those opportunities might be. Help the police support other events that are going on in the community and/or how to be sponsored and, and put on perhaps one of our own, uh, that can kind of bring folks together from different cultures. So, uh, so we were able to, to, to do this activity at both Summerfest and on the Farmers Market, uh, and was, was really well received by some folks. Got some pictures here for you. That you can see on Summerfest and the Farmers Market, so those are the, those are the posters that people put up. Uh, so we're able to kind of bucket those and, and, uh, have a distribution, so, yeah. Questions?
Feedback was good? The market, that's great. Very exciting.
Great conversations with people, yeah. Alright, so now I'll give it over to Detective Bunton to talk about our most recent venture, which was with the school district and, and the police department.
So when I first got involved with this in two thousand sixteen, I was approached by Mary Moss, who was looking for police officers to engage the community. Uh, this is on the heels of all the negative press that went through with police officers around the country with the shootings of, of, uh, black Americans. And, and that's what the focus was with the press. So what we wanted to do is reach out to our community and show them what their police department was like, is how it, but was being portrayed around the country. So we wanted to start it out with the youth, you know, with old folks who kind of set our ways and were pretty, got our preconceived ideas, and we wanted to reach the youth, because that's the future of the country. So we wanted to start some dialogue with the youth, so we came up with a steep summit, uh, in coordination with the, uh, Hope Park School District, Grant Twymann, who had already run official talks in Tacoma. So he started this, and we, I did originally, we were gonna go to horse school, off middle schools in Lakewood, but that might mean a lot to children. We're breaking down the two schools, and the two schools that popper and help off middle schools. Ending sessions with, uh, introduction from the chief and Mary Moss and the principal, and also, uh, Rob Adair, the superintendent. Kind of the icebreaker, so the kids get a, get a chance to talk to us, and try not to address those kids, because we don't address them. So this is an adult. So we wanted to treat them as young stuff. Put in, get the icebreaker, kind of break, and you're all, food, always get icebreakers. We started out with food, oversee, uh, starting out with official there where officers were in the middle and the students were outside. Students were engaged by, only by listening. Questions were presented to officers, officers spoke. What our jobs were, people have ideas of our job, where we wanted to let them know exactly. About what we do, while we got into this profession. After that was done, then the officers were sitting on the outside. They were all presenting the questions. Prior to this, we all filled out questionnaires. Asked a pretty personal question on, but nobody's name on, did a lot of squishing and moving around. And Grant, who was a facilitator, he asked a bunch of questions. How many people were related? Some of them were, all around race, uh, sexual orientation and all types of things. And wanted people to stand up with a paper that they had that had to be affirmative. And once you did that, he wanted to show that there was, that somebody in the room that were related. So that made it, uh, something that made the students kind of lighten up and ease up and not be so afraid to get, they, when we provide, they got to get it, sure. Wrap this up with showing this, how much, how, how different we are, but how similar we are. Opened officer's eyes about teams around them. For kind of standoffish because we thought teams didn't want us to be in their conversation, dropping a basketball container. Obviously, but, uh, for the students, why don't you guys approach us? Why don't you come talk to us about basketball? However, on the other hand, we had students also said, "My family hates the police, so therefore I hate the police." After we had the conversation, and we were able to talk candidly with, with the students, everyone said, "I'm gonna talk to my family because I see something totally different from what I had received." Because what was around the country and what was being portrayed around the country of the police officers, it opened this student's eye and other students' eyes. Want to continue that, and matter of fact, students have reached out, "You guys said you were coming back, but you haven't been back." And so they get kind of angry because they want to continue the talks and ask you, so we want to try to make that at least a month. Questions for the management. When is this in November this year?
And that, we all know that they've got their youth council coming up. Is there gonna be any sort of component of that kind of conversation that's gonna be part of their big summit, youth summit this...
Yeah, eventually we want to branch out to the high schools and then maybe some of the local colleges, but with the, the, this chair's sinking on. And I'll stand pick them. Uh, with the outreach of the students from the two schools that we attended, and the screams and cries for us to return, we want to get to those and get those follow-ups done before we start branching out.
Got it.
What we've talked about is continuing with the youth creators and the conversation, so that we're having that conversation before they transition into high school. But then one of the other elements that we've also talked about is, um, having high school students engage with the business community too, right? So to allow us to understand the needs of the business community, and so, you know, just looking for different ways to, to bridge some of those gaps in our, in our city.
Do you guys still do late night at the Y? Wonder if that's a good opportunity for those conversations to happen?
Grant, Grant and I actually talked about, uh, too, maybe an event to have.
Right.
In March for Black History II, and kind of continue the conversations that maybe some of you have submitted recently, right?
Yeah, I heard you. We can hear him, yeah.
President, being here, honored to be part of the LMCC. Uh, well, Mary and I attended the, uh, LMCC. First, we're gonna be having the opening, uh, Harbutter King and... Library is doing something called voting. I'll give you the page of voting, and also with the, we're gonna talk about the census twenty-twenty. And I think one of the key things when we talk about all the things that LMCC does and partnerships is, I want to just sort of use a... Tell me I forget, show me I remember, involve me I understand, and that's what LMCC is about. How are we going to involve the various components that you see on the chart? How are we going to involve our community, our... Is, yes, I am. Talking about is, how do we connect folks with me? We have a wonderful, too many, your... One particular part of our season, which is the holiday, not everybody celebrates Christmas. Not everybody looks at the holiday season the same. But, uh, years ago, working with the Children's Museum, we had something called the Festival of Lights, which engages people from various backgrounds, cultures, because you can take a look at, say, Lushen Rye, you can take a look at the Ospasas, you can take a look at the Congo, you can take a look at the... All of those very unique cultural holidays that happen, that happen with the winter season, all have lights, they all use candles. One of the things that we hope to do, because they have... Look to the common ground, what can we reach to the common ground that we can engage people, involve people? Because if we involve people, engage people, our, uh, that the LMCC is going to be able to do that in a united way and making sure that we... Are there any questions?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You are impressive. And I don't mean, I don't say that often.
Special pronoun in Bah.
Well, and I'll tell you why. Because you engage. Three of you were standing up, walking, talking, and involving the audience as well as the council. And so you keep doing that. You guys are off to a very good start, and I am very, very impressed with the fact. I mean, you did it first with the skills, and I thank you very much for that, although M and M's would be nice too. You did it, Detective, and ma'am, you were magnificent. Because you engaged the audience out there as well as us, and I really think that goes a long way to accomplishing what you are doing. So I thank you, and, um, nothing else to say, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
It's incumbent on all of us to stand up and engage, isn't it, in the community, for some, yeah?
That makes me very tired, huh?
Stand up and engage.
Stand up and engage.
Be engaged.
I like that. I like that.
Yeah.
Simpson, that song, you know.
Yeah.
You wanted a song and dance, you got it.
So, uh, going forward, we, uh, one of our, our mission statement is to celebrate, and we are planning one big celebration, hopefully in the September, October timeframe. We will start to work on that now, so, uh, from our diversity, uh, engagement with the community, they, we asked what would, how would you like to see diversity celebrated in Lakewood? And it was overwhelming with food and music. So we're gonna see what we can pull together for that timeframe, so.
It'd be wonderful to think about maybe using the Colonial Plaza as a great opportunity for that with the food trucks that could come in, and the wide spaces for music and dance presentations or whatever would be appropriate, but it's a nice big space for that.
Yeah, we are meeting with Mayor Dodsworth Thursday to see what we can come up with.
Yeah, it'd be great.
To have it there and have it be a signature event for LMCC is gonna be costly from what I'm hearing, so we'll find out.
And then my dovetail well on, uh, art. It's going to be completed by hopefully mid to late August. It has got a, a very much of a diversity component to it, so you guys will enjoy it when you see the final product, the gateway piece.
Yeah, we will continue to partner with any, any of the events that we have in the city, but we're trying to come up with a signature event for LMCC.
That's great. Well, very good. Do you have any questions of us? We appreciate you coming and really appreciate all the time you're investing because it's important work. You're very welcome. Thanks, Marie. Spearheading as always. Kind of dovetails into our next conversation. You guys can stay if you want, but we're going into the Build Your Better Here campaign, and having a great diverse community is all about building the better here. So we'll hear from Ms. Grimley on this and Becky Newton. Come on up. Oh, she's gonna have the clicker, I guess. Sorry about that.
Alright, well, good evening. Um, this evening...
This evening, we are going to be providing you with an update on the Build Your Better Here campaign as well as the 90-second promotional video. So just a quick kind of refresher. Last year, we came forward with the imaging campaign, which had a goal of creating a cohesive and compelling campaign to overcome some of the erroneous perceptions about the city. And at that time, we came forward with kind of the roadmap of deliverables, items that will be developed. One of those being this 90-second video. And we also presented to you at that time, our target audiences. So the starters, which are the young families that are looking for a place to live, affordable, family-friendly housing. The builders, who are looking to either start a business or, you know, build a, build a, kind of a entrepreneurial spirit, if you will. The long-termers, who are folks who have lived here for a long time and they love it here and they want to share that pride with the community and let folks know how great it is to be in Lakewood. And then the warriors, which are our military service members that are potentially coming here, either because they've been stationed here or they're transitioning out of the service and they're looking to find that forever home. And Lakewood is a great place for that to be. So these are the different demographics that our target audience encompasses. So last year was spent largely, we kind of had half of the year. So that was largely spent developing some of those deliverables, coming up with the materials, as well as doing the, getting the photos. And we took advantage of the summer weather, got out to Summer Fest. We also then too, got the content for the video. So that included hiring the professional drone photographer, having our team with Hemisphere go out and shoot some standalone and video images as well, both at Summer Fest as well as dedicated shooting day where they went around the city. And then also too, after that was done, hiring a voice talent to do the script that was created by Hemisphere that we had sent through for, for the council review as well. And then working with a composer who composed the music for the video. So we've shown you both, actually, the 90-second video was sent out on Friday, but also the, there've been two 30-second promotional videos that have gone out. And those have already been running on LinkedIn, Facebook, Instagram. And so those are just 30-second ones that are pretty quick. They're meant to target folks who are on their phones and they see them in their feed. So there's, you know, the words are appearing to be read on screen. It's not the, the talking. And then I'm going to scoot over here to show you guys the 90-second video.
We get to see the 30-second or is it two?
I have those available if you want to see them as well, yeah. Okay, so I am. Peeping out of this. Going to this. And playing. There we go.
If you're looking for better, we're building better here. Better is a good deal on a house with good bones. Or a house on the lake. Pick your lake. There are seven. Better looks like more feeding your soul, less feeding the meter. Better is a grub crawl worthy international district. Some of the most professional first responders in the country. And an innovative, award-winning school district. It's an economy fueled by the fourth largest military base in the world. And a business climate built to invite investment and bulldoze barriers. Better is a downtown poised to become a walkable playground. And parts that are literal playgrounds. Whether you're building one of these, one of these, or one of these, now is the time to get in on a South Sound hotspot just waiting to happen. Turns out Lakewood has better cover. The question is, how will you build your better here?
Okay. Brianna, I might need your help finding the green, yeah. Sorry, and you want to see the other two, correct?
Sure.
The other two, okay. We just have to grab them off the desktop because I didn't know if we were going to. Yeah. This is the one that's been on. There's some music that will kick in, but this is the one that's. You see, there's a lot of kind of complimentary images similar to the longer one. And then that one was the one that's been appearing on Facebook and LinkedIn targeting developers. And then this one in builders. And then this one is the one that's been targeting real estate developers. Okay, now I have to get back to the PowerPoint. Do I just hit the PowerPoint and then do that?
To be able to have some of our own buildings in that first part of that.
Exit that one or do that? New buildings. Thank you.
Yeah, it would be helpful, yeah.
So those are the, the videos. And we'll, in a minute, we'll get through to where we'll also be doing some additional ones, those 30-second ones. It'll go forward on different platforms. So we're kind of moving into the next phase now that we have the content. We have the videos, we have the still photographs, we have the digital content. Now we're going into that digital marketing phase. So that's really, 2020 is going to be the rollout of that. So we've kind of done that slow introduction, but now that the video complete, we're going to do a little bit more outward. So more folks are going to see it and we're going to do more of that raising awareness. So, you know, right now, our focus on digital is, is the Facebook ads that we're targeting our, our folks that we've already identified. The continued, the LinkedIn sponsored content, the Google ads. So for folks who are looking to move to South, the South Sound, to Lakewood where not, if they Google, it'll pop up in their feed. And then YouTube ads. So kind of if you go on YouTube and you go to look for something, you get the little ad that comes up first, that idea. We've also, our team at Hemisphere has created landing pages. And so this is allowing us to track the success of the campaign elements and the ads that we're doing. So we know, okay, are these having the desired effect? Are we, are people seeing this and are they then coming through to check out more about Lakewood? And it's, they're catered to specifically where that content was placed as well. So we know, okay, you know, hey, Facebook maybe didn't do as good, but LinkedIn did great. Or, you know, we've done a few print ads, maybe those haven't had this desired effect. So maybe we look at not doing print ads anymore and putting more money into the platforms that are having the most success, the money of the budget that we already have allocated. So here's some examples. The one on the far left that says mobile, that's an example of what our mobile ad looks like. And it has the buildyourbetterhere.com, which is the landing page website that was created. The middle one would be example of like a Facebook still ad that would go up. And then another one for the, the family targeting joint basis McCord, excuse me. So these are ads that have actually also gone into print. So those specific URLs at the bottom, if you can see them, which is kind of hard. The buildyourbetterhere.com/jblm, that one in JBLM magazine that goes out on base as well as to, I mean, the destinations are endless as far as where they push that. And then the Western Real Estate Business Magazine, those are all the ones that we've done for the print so far. This is an example of just what the head part of the landing page looks like. So again, the same continuous imagery and the landing pages are all basically the same, except for you get to them from a different URL again for the tracking. So how we're knowing, how we're doing is obviously through the metrics and what, what we're using to see who's coming to us and, and for what reasons. So we'll take a look at just what December looked like. Based on the platforms where we were, we reached 214,579 people. We had about 2,800 clicks to the buildyourbetterhere.com. And then you can see through for each of those social media channels, the return rate we had on, on either the videos or other content that was placed there. So our next steps are to go forward with the social media rollout. So February would be kicking off our 90-second video that way through social. And then each month, all the way through to December, has a different kind of theme or topic still to be fleshed out. But there's kind of a planned idea for how we can try and incorporate the community as well and, and get buy-in from folks and, and bring in key players within the community to participate in this. That'll include also going out, I think, to our, our groups, our organizations as well and rule this out publicly to them and hope that they'll also kind of be our ambassadors and help share the message with everybody. And, you know, we've been in constant communication with our team at Hemisphere and they've been doing a great job of responding to our questions on the fly and getting us print ads when we say, oh, the deadline's tomorrow, can you do this? So we've had a, a, a good job of kind of keeping that conversation in those lines open to develop the content. And they've been doing a good job of providing us with updates on how we're doing and, you know, do we need to look at this and decide, okay, maybe we're not going to do any more print ads, but we're going to focus more on digital and reaching audiences that way. And that is my update. Are there any questions? Or comments?
I've had a couple of questions, so, you know. I think you guys have done a fabulous job. So the interesting feedback is when the video clips were put together, did those kind of go through some sort of testing with you guys or a group of folks to say, hey, that resonates? I'm getting the feeling of blank from that, the visual image? Or, or how did you guys go about finalizing the video to get the theme or the feel you wanted from that?
So we worked with Hemisphere and actually Adam's here. He's the president of Hemisphere and a Lakewood resident as well. And so Adam and his team created a draft and shared it with us. And with that, they kind of put together the pieces from what they'd collected and then also presented that to the composer. So we met with the composer to go over the music and listen to a bunch of different samples. As far as the imagery, we did sit down and we took a look at photos and some of the video clips and provided our feedback as to, you know, we'd like to see more of this or we'd like to see less of this. But as far as externally beyond us, no, we didn't bring in any of the stakeholders or anyone that we had previously inquired with as we were developing the first start of this campaign.
And then the information in the website, I'm just looking at it right here. So it'll be interesting to see if it addresses the questions of people who may get an emotional reaction to the video or some other snippet might go and try to find some data as to why they may move here or build or invest here. So looking at, those are just my thoughts about the strategy that goes into putting the pieces together to try to get the reaction you hope to achieve, right? And what was your reaction, folks? Did you get an emotional reaction to it? Did it make you think, hmm, differently or what? Maybe we're not looking for an emotional reaction per se, but what was the reaction? It'd be interesting to, this is a pretty good beta testing group. What do you think, Mr. Brandstetter?
My first reaction was that it was very professionally done and looked, and so it made a good image of the city in that respect of going forward. One of the things that was important to me and was a, was a part of the, the goal of, of the project was to counteract some of the negative perceptions that are out there. So now I know how you do that in 30 seconds or, 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 or a little bit in there. But I think that with respect to the perceptions around public safety, you know, I, I think that that perception was directly confronted by the things, commenting that this is a city that has some of the most professional first responders around, which is, which is both a truism and I think goes directly, directly at that. And I was also glad to see, because one of the areas, particularly with respect to the warrior audience, but starters as well, had to do with schools. And I'm glad to see that there, there, there was some positive information about schools and also that on your future list over there, that you have a thing of where you're going to focus on the quality of schools and teachers. In, in particularly looking at that, you know, the, the, in both of those cases, that the, 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 the quality is based on the professionalism and the quality of the people who are, who are dealing with, 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 with those institutions to be able to go and do that. And you cleverly avoided the perception that you can't get to Lakewood on iFive.
I'm looking at the buttons, I knew that was pretty good. Anyone else have any thoughts or comments?
I'm sorry, Lindy, you. I thought it was very well done. I like this and Mr. Brandstetter's put it well, there's a trifecta here, schools, military, public safety. I'd also add economic opportunity. But. You're going to have a heck of a time selling some of what you put up there. We've got QFCs, Denny's, and other stores in the public eye that are still an eyesore. And that's what's bothering me. This is excellent. Now, what about the flip side? And I, it dawned on me when we were looking at the Colonial Plaza. And I remember standing there that night and how proud I am about this. I'm looking around, wonderful work. I had sent you photographs of that whole thing because I'm that proud of it. And I looked over there and I said, there's QFC. And I'm thinking. So, I mean, I just, there's, I'm happy for this, I like it. Although I did talk to you about Van Halen and I did not hear that.
Well, I can hear Sosa either.
Well. So, but, and I, I think this is, this is well done. But I'm just, like I say, there's just a. You know, I, I, it's just, there's, there's an awareness with me. There's a, it is a sore spot with me that there are parts of this city and it's around the area you're talking about that just don't work. Anyway, I'm going to end on a positive. This is very well done and I really appreciate the triangulation I saw here on warriors, schools, and public safety. That was very well done.
Nice job. The hardest thing about this type of thing is that it can take years to realize results. I'm all about a good marketing campaign and I think Lakewood has suffered from negative perceptions. I have a couple of questions because this is the first time that I've really experienced this. So I was curious, did you, was it part of the, of the plan to do a baseline perception survey before the work? And have you had a chance to do that?
Talk about kind of the.
Do I need a second?
Yeah, what? No.
Mary will hook you up.
Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, so our whole process was to conduct a series of focus groups and interviews inside the city, outside of the city, get as many voices as possible. Get as many voices as possible. I'm sorry. Into the conversation before we developed anything. So the process was first to, in developing those personas and developing the tagline, developing the brand, developing the messaging, was to interview, discuss, share, get approval. And then we created the video, which was also very iterative also. So what we did is we created a series of scripts. We collected a lot of assets and we created a lot of drafts and we shared that with people. But I do think that right now, we're in the position of sharing it with the public to get sort of that feedback. Because it's, I think, been sort of behind closed doors until we got sort of that approval. until we got sort of that approval. And now we're going to sort of go wide with it, and I think we can see if it resonates with people. So there was a significant amount of work to get a baseline before we started. But we're always working to refine our process, so we're, I don't think we're fully into out on the public yet. So we could do that at any time.
So if six months from now, or a year from now, or two years from now, if you rerun your survey or your focus groups, you will be able to tell if perceptions have changed? So it was that type of survey or?
No, it was more of a qualitative than quantitative survey. So, yeah, it wasn't a sort of numbers-based thing. So, yeah, it was more discussion-based.
So what outcomes did you build into the plan? Like percentage of building permits, home sale, increase in home sales, increase in rentals?
We very much wanted to do that, but also recognized that it was going to be two, five, ten years before we acquired an actual business and/or, you know, new businesses coming in, as well as sort of new home sales. Really hard to draw a one-to-one connection between showing a video and somebody bought a house. However, so it's probably going to be a more large-scale over time kind of a thing. But I do think that the ads that have gone out have not seen a lot of exposure. So I think we're still in that range of, we might want to pause and see if we can get a baseline now or, you know, do it as, just as the campaign starts, try to get that sentiment.
And I think the other thing to note too is, part of the things we probably aren't going to be able to measure, right? Because it's the imagery, it's the just general like, oh, hey, that's Lakewood, you know? And it's kind of that larger, big picture. But part of with the landing pages is we are having the ROI that we are looking at. So, okay, this was in, you know, this magazine, or this was targeting this group. How many of them clicked through? How many of them went so far as to contact Becky? Her name is on the landing pages. So we are setting up things like that to measure, okay, is this really meeting the folks that we're trying to target? And if it's not, then what do we need to do to get there? I think it's a little bit harder to measure on the video. Is that going to be a direct translation to permits? That's tougher to know. But I think the idea behind it is just getting the proper images of the city out there so people can see that, in fact, there's a lot of great things to do here. This is a place to have your family. It's a place that you want to live. It's not nineteen-ninety cops on Fox, right? So, and unfortunately, people still regularly refer to that. And so that's kind of the idea behind this too, is getting the right images out there and then creating that circle around it with all the right information. And then where we can track, tracking that way, so.
If we have the opportunity to do a baseline survey before the videos are too widely distributed, I would highly suggest that we figure out a way to do that, because that does allow us an opportunity to then rerun the survey to see if, quote-unquote, perceptions have changed, you know, based on how the survey is set up. Because you're absolutely right, you cannot make a one-to-one correlation with building permits and home sales. You could obviously see how many people call through to Becky's line and how many inquiries you get versus this time last year and historical trends. But if there's a, being able to track it in any way in the outcomes area really helps us show a number of things in addition to being a good steward of taxpayer dollars and that sort of thing. And so, I apologize, professional hazard in communications. But I'm really excited about the campaign.
Great, thank you. Sort of a follow-up question. It sounds like you're asking sort of what we'd call brand sentiment or how do people feel about the city. So I think that is definitely a thing we could continue to pursue and to get that as the baseline and then sort of check in at the end. One thing we are definitely doing is tracking the success of the campaign itself, so the actual exposure and engagement and follow-through. But it sounds like what you're asking is more of like, you know, the sentiment?
For me, I like to ask the question, how will you know if you're successful? And so if a lot of people see the video, but nobody does anything about it, and if the perception of Lakewood doesn't change, you're not successful. So, in my book, so.
Well, we've invested in it, and we look forward to achieving some great results from it. It looks like a lot of good work has gone into it, so thank you all for that. I mean, the data in the website looks really good as I'm going through it now. There's one on family income. It goes Pierce County as opposed to Lakewood, because the Pierce County data is a little bit better than Lakewood data. But it's aspirational. Good, so rollout starts when again? Remind us?
February. I mean, if everyone's good with the video, then we'll sit back with Adam and Paul and talk about launching it. And then I know the city manager is excited to get to do it as part of his State of the Cities as well. But we'll have that, we'll roll out preferably in February would be the goal as a part of our social media campaign.
Very good. Any other questions, folks? Good? What do you guys think back there? Thumbs up, thumbs sideways? What do you think? Sideways? Not enough in emotional reaction or not diverse in a sense?
The time is going down. The bailout point, the latest stat I read was thirty-one seconds. That's why I love the fact that it has the words on it, because so many people are scrolling through their feeds without listening to music. They're multitasking. They're very, this, now that I've beat it up, you guys did a great job in putting them together. And I think, I think, I think we're fine. I think the, having the different time segments is helpful. And they're running on a variety of digital platforms, and they've got the landing pages that back things up, plus the people power that's behind it. You know, Becky's obviously not just sitting in her office waiting for things to happen. And so there are all sorts of things going on to support and enhance work. I might add one more thing. We can do our part if we are, each of us on our respective digital platforms, we can help promote.
Good evening. My remarks this morning, it's been a long day, sure. My remarks this evening are really three parts. First is just to introduce the topic, which is the Five-Year Consolidated Plan and its Associated Action Plan. You have a memo that's quite detailed that goes through the history of our program, provides quite a bit of background data. Reviews also the city's 1% set aside and provides some general information on SHB 2016, HB 2163 funding, which is a part of a program that the city, in consultation with Pierce County, makes awards to affordable housing as well as homelessness and social services programs throughout Pierce County and sometimes in Lakewood. Now, it's not my intention to go into all the details, because there's quite a bit of information that's been provided, basically what the CDBG program looks like, its funding sources, where we spent the money as far as priorities in the past and the like. But if you'd like to, we can go into that level of detail at some point this evening. The second part is really to introduce our consultant, which is Enterprise. And the person to my far right is Anna Ravindranath. Sometimes I have difficulty with names, and so, anyway. Anna will be giving the presentation this evening on what the process is going to look like and the relationship between Lakewood and Tacoma as part of the consortium. Jeff and I are prepared to talk more about the consortium. If you have questions, it's been around for a while. Lakewood's too small by itself to use home funds or to obtain home funds. And so as a part of this process, the consortium, Tacoma gives us a certain amount of money, roughly around $250,000 for home funds, which we use for affordable housing programs in Lakewood. Again, Tacoma selected Enterprise Community Partners to prepare the consolidated plan for both the cities. And Enterprise has worked on a couple of projects in the Pacific Northwest, one affiliated with the city of Seattle, and another one with the town of, the city of Tacoma on an affordable housing action strategy. And in some ways, Tacoma has some similar issues that we're having right now with increasing rents and impact that's having upon the housing market. Anna's going to lead in the presentation this evening on the PowerPoint. She's going to be talking about the scope, outcomes, the schedule, relationship of the plan and impediments for housing, a review of protected classes, and the planning commission involvement. And we really want to spend most of the evening hearing from the city council before we begin the public presentation process about what your thoughts are as a group on how you would wish to fund CDBG and home funds in the future. And then that becomes sort of the starting point for us in moving forward with the consolidated plan. And so, Mr. Whalen, if it's okay with you, I'll have Anna proceed with the PowerPoint.
Great, thank you. Can everybody hear me? I tend to be a little soft-spoken, great. Thank you. Good evening again. My name is Anna Ravindranath, and I'm with Enterprise Community Partners. To start us off, I'll tell you guys a little bit about who Enterprise is. We are a national nonprofit organization headquartered in Columbia, Maryland. We restarted, our founder was Jim Rouse, who was actually a banker. And he played a pretty significant role in developing Columbia, Maryland. And also, our organization has played a pretty big role in the low-income housing tax credit program and then also the development of the home partnership program, which is what Lakewood is in a consortium with Tacoma. Again, we're a national affordable housing nonprofit organization. We have a local office here located in Seattle as well. And as was just mentioned, last year, we worked with the city of Tacoma in the development of their ten-year Affordable Housing Action Strategy. Based on our work with the strategy, Tacoma invited us to develop their consolidated plan. And because Lakewood is part of a home consortium, we're doing it in conjunction with the city of Lakewood as well. Any questions on Enterprise? Okay. I am specifically with Enterprise Advisors, and that is the public consulting arm of Enterprise Community Partners. I am based out of our Washington, DC office, and that's where I'm mostly headquartered. So to kick us off, wanted to give everyone an overview of the structure of today's presentation. I'll be walking through describing the consolidated plan that's going to be covering the 2020 to 2024 planning cycle. All con plan cycles are in a three-to-five-year timeframe, and Lakewood is part of the five-year planning cycle. Then I'll go over the relationship, the con plan, to other planning initiatives that Lakewood is taking or has underway. And then also talk to you a little bit about the timeframe and then also the community engagement that's required as part of this planning process. So this outlines what each step of the consolidated planning process is. First, we assess and identify, and that's done through a needs assessment and a market analysis. And essentially, we use quite a bit of census data that's tabulated by HUD and made available by HUD as part of this process to understand what the needs are around housing and community development. So this is really looking at demographic, population, what have the trends been over time? Where does population seem to be going and kind of projecting the next five years? Using that, also identifying what the market conditions are in Lakewood. So this is where we'll really be focusing on understanding the quality of the stock, what are the substandard housing conditions that certain households may be finding? But then also understanding where overcrowding is happening, if there is a geographic pattern to where, are there a lot of low-income residents concentrated in a particular part of the city? What are the condition of the housing? How are residents reacting to a changing market? One thing that we understood last year during the Ten Year Housing Action Strategy in Tacoma is that the market is changing very quickly. And keeping pace with that varies across the community. And a lot of the entitlement programs covered under the con plan process are geared towards low-income residents. And then, once we identify what the issues are and what the top housing concerns in Lakewood are, we'll prioritize, but then also look to align with other planning efforts that's underway in Lakewood. So this could be a comprehensive plan, a general plan, or other housing and community development-oriented plan, like a strategy plan. And then we take what is prioritized, and a really important component to the prioritizing is going to be community engagement. There are requirements that HUD has laid out to, as part of this planning process, where when you're doing the plan, you're required to solicit a certain amount of community feedback. That includes feedback from residents, but also your stakeholders, like your nonprofit service providers, your advocates. You want to have a full holistic engagement process as part of this. And then the acting is the preceding planning that's done through the action plan and then the CAPR. The action plan is a process that jurisdictions use to formally apply for funding for that annual period. And then the action plan is also connected to a report, which is referred to as the CAPR, which jurisdictions primarily use to understand and evaluate the effectiveness of the actions that they've taken. That is done on an annual basis. Both the action plan and the CAPR is done on an annual basis, and it covers the full five-year process. One thing I failed to mention when I went over the process is that jurisdictions receive entitlement funding, which is based on their population and the percentage of low-income residents in their community. So Lakewood receives an allocation of CDBG funding, and because they're part of a consortium with the city of Tacoma, they also have a smaller program, which is most primarily through home. CDBG, the long version, is Community Development Block Grant, has been around for several years and is a tool that a lot of communities use for critical pieces like a public infrastructure. A lot of time, that's your streets, that's your sidewalks, and A lot of time, that's your streets, that's your sidewalks and other infrastructure improvements. It can also be applied to economic development and housing as well. Whereas, the home program is exclusively focused on housing and economic development or workforce opportunity for households that are eligible for housing developed through home. Both programs are geared again through, geared towards low mod areas. And the home program specifically is for households that are 80% of the area median income. The overall process for the con plan is going to be your five-year plan that will include goals and strategies that are going to outline how the city of Lakewood is going to be spending down their allocation over the course of that five-year planning period. Again, annually, the city will put together an annual plan that outlines to HUD for that year what actions are being prioritized. But your con plan will cover all of your priorities and goals for the full five years. The con plan will cover CDBG and home and can be applied towards housing, services, neighborhood improvements, and job development. So, for this planning cycle that we're in right now, this captures our full timeline. We kicked off the work with Jeff and Martha back in December. And right now, we're going through the data. So, we're evaluating the needs and evaluating what the market conditions are here in Lakewood. Then, we'll roll out the community engagement that we're working with staff on. We've identified key stakeholders in Lakewood that are going to be critical to engage in this process to get their feedback to help prioritize. And then go through the process of developing goals and strategies. There is a 30-day public comment period for the con plan as dictated by HUD rules. And in that timeframe, we'll also hold a public hearing. So, that's an additional opportunity for the public, including council, to provide feedback. And then by May 15th, the city will submit the con plan to HUD. And that's done through an IDIS reporting system. Any questions on timeline? Sure. So, as part of the con plan process, HUD has laid out specific requirements that we have to make sure that we hit in order for the plan to be adopted by HUD. HUD provides us a wide range of data that's part of this consolidated plan process. And they use, they provide that data using the census data and the American Community Survey. So, the data, the timeframe that the data is available right now, the most recent data available is 2011 to 2015. So, you use that data to really be able to understand how has demographics changed? How is the overall population growing or shrinking? And then what's happening within the market? What are the conditions that are available? How are home values changing? Are they keeping pace with income? And are there any geographic concentrations?
It's only HUD data, it's not local data, it's all coming down from whatever HUD believes.
So, we can, we can use local data and HUD encourages us to supplement where available. Typically, demographic data is best using census data. But we find a lot of value in evaluating code enforcement or building data to be able to pull in more of that local context to get a sense of what the market's happening.
Thank you. Our unique situation, or maybe it's not that unique, but our situation of where we're joined at the hip with Tacoma in this process. And some of the assess and identify and prioritize and align things, writing those into a single plan where we have differences or we certainly perceive differences. And we certainly have differences in priorities between, between our communities and even between neighborhoods within our communities. So, do you, how do you get around addressing that in a single consolidated plan in a way that you can also take the plan and hold yourself accountable to it?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. How, when you're part, when you're doing a joint planning process, how do you capture the nuances that are unique to Lakewood and versus Tacoma? And I think that's where data is really valuable. So, a lot of the data analysis that we're doing right now is looking at the differences between Tacoma, Lakewood, the county, the state. And then we compare those numbers to what's happening nationally. That's a way we do, one of the ways you can do to try to make sure you're capturing those nuances between the two communities. The other piece that, that's part of the con plan is using data to be able to understand if there are any concentrations. So, is there a particular area of the city that tends to have more substandard housing that may not meet the health and safety quality for the city as a whole? Or there's a part of the city that has a lot of low-income residents? Or there's something unique to the housing stock in Lakewood that's not unique to Tacoma? So, those are some ways that we go about making sure that the goals are representative to both communities. So, while the plan is done together, particularly when we're doing the community engagement, it's similar stakeholders. There's requirements that are part of the con plan that we reach out to, for example, Pierce County Continuum of Care. There's a section in the con plan where we have to assess additional housing resources that may not be specifically within the purview of the city of Lakewood, but as part of the funding requirement, we're required to assess that. So, I would say through census data, through local data, and then the community engagement, which is another form of data, is how you would really try to capture what the differences between the two communities are. So, your goals are speaking to it, but then you're also prioritizing those goals in a way that's more appropriate for the Lakewood market versus Tacoma.
So, I guess that is, I would just speak for myself, is that it seemed that in 2015, when we were working on this the last time, it seemed to me that we ended up with some elements of the 2016 to 2020 plan being vague, I guess would be my word, to do it. In other words, where it was, that it was, it was hard to tell in the plan, you know, what outcomes that were specified were really dependent upon action by Tacoma and which ones were dependent upon action by Lakewood. Is that there maybe isn't a way to sort that out? We do a better job of that in our annual CAPRs, where we, we, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the CAPR and in our internal mechanisms, we really look at what kind of outcomes did we really get in Lakewood as opposed to even though the document has to sort of blend things in? I guess what was, you know, I, maybe I'm wondering about it in your review as you're starting out, what was, what did you see of the, as the strengths of our 2016-2020 plan? With respect, exception of Ms. Farmer, the rest of us here were, were here when, 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 when that was done. And were there any weaknesses that you'd like to bring to our attention that maybe we need to, to think about? Did we really mean what we said?
Sure. I think you actually listed maybe one of them. A lot of communities, when they do the consolidated plan, they intentionally are vague because they want to be able to prioritize all of the eligible uses. So, because these are federal funding, it's very prescriptive. HUD, you know, is very prescriptive in terms of what you can apply CDBG or home funds towards. So, a lot of times, it's a strategy that communities take is to say, this is a very small pot of funding I have and I want to give myself the most flexibility in how I can use it. So, in a previous life, I used to work for St. Louis County in Missouri and we had a home program, which was also part of a consortium. And one of our main programs that we applied the home funding towards was down payment assistance, which is to help people who are at 80% of the area median income or below be able to buy a home. And it was geared towards first-time home buyers. And in order to do that, the county wanted to be able to have it be a program that provided counseling services, but they also wanted to have it be gap financing. So, if there was a tax, a bigger tax credit project that was coming to the county, they would be able to apply home funds or they could partner with the housing authority. So, those are just some strategies that sometimes communities do take. So, when you're reviewing a con plan, it tends to be vague because they're trying to give themselves the most flexibility in applying their funding. In terms of maybe what Lakewood could do differently, I think would be to consider if there were certain strategies that you felt really worked in the Lakewood context that you want to see more of. So, I know before we came, one of the things that Jeff was telling me about was the MSP program and how the city leverages that funding, which the fact, you know, that funding source in terms of from the federal government is not an active source. But Lakewood has structured the MSP program in a way where it's a revolving funding source. So, that's an example of a strategy that Lakewood has taken, given that it's a very small pot of funding. And they've, you know, figured out a way to continue to have that funding be available in preceding years. So, that's just, that's an example of, I think, something that's working really well. And if there were more specific activities that council wanted to see, a way to think about that might be if there were certain geographic priorities that you wanted to make sure you saw in this con plan.
One of the challenges was CDBG funds being effective. Well, when I first came on the council, I guess that our priorities, the way the four priorities were, we've subsequently turned them on their head. What was four is now one and vice versa. And, you know, for, in the early part of city hood where we were doing this, there was a great deal of focus on economic development and there was, I tried to prioritize that as the one thing that would went to do that. And, and it was something that we found very little return on investment because of both the strategies that we chose and the rules we were constrained by, I think, to be able to go and do that. And so, we, we moved to economic development being in the last plan, our lowest priority to be able to go and do that. And in your remarks, you mentioned that, that infrastructure, which is what we've had as our highest priority and has, and that at least is something that is, we've been easy to measure impact of, that has been what we were doing. You mentioned in your remarks that a lot of cities have infrastructure sort of towards the top of their list to be able to go and, go and, go and do that. But are, as you go through this process, okay? And you're here this evening talking about us, are you at a point yet of where you've got all the data to where we as a council should be looking at within those four priorities to rank them again? Or are you looking for us to rank them as you go into the process?
Well, we're in the process of evaluating the data now. We're pulling additional ACS data and we're in the process of evaluating it right now. I think what would be helpful is to know as we, before we move into the prioritizing phase, if there were issues that were really important to folks here today that you want to make sure that the con plan is speaking to. So, are there trends happening in the housing market? You know, has it changed quite a bit, similar to the Tacoma housing market where prices are going up very quickly? And that really limits, particularly if you're a low-income household, your ability to respond to that because it's happening too fast. That's just an example I'm giving, you know, as, as in something that you might want to make sure that the con plan is speaking to because it's an issue that's really front and center in Lakewood right now.
I'm gonna have Mr. Bokey maybe ask the next question. I think you've kind of outlined very general categories of concern on page 25 of our packet, affordable housing and homelessness broadly, safety and youth mental health. So, I think that's something we can get our teeth on. Mr. Bokey?
So, and excuse me if I'm going beyond what the scope of your work is tonight, but you mentioned your, your experience and I want to talk specifically about the home funding. And I'm not, I think I have an idea of what we've been using the home funds for. But could you give us some ideas as to some innovative ways that some jurisdictions have been using the home funds?
One of the ways that I see home funds used a lot is when a community works with Habitat for Humanity. It's a funding source that can be used for down payment. And in Habitat's model, they also provide a second soft loan. So, to have the home loan, you know, is an extra buffer for, for the homeowner. It's a good way to help the homeowner save for down payment. Usually, that program comes with home buyer counseling. So, even if a homeowner isn't at the point where they qualify for a loan, a lot of service providers who provide that program will work with them on credit repair. So, it really gets how home, low-income households ready for homeownership. So, that's one of the ways I've seen home be used quite a bit. Another way where home is used for, as gap financing is with light tech projects, low-income tax credit projects.
What now?
Low-income housing tax credit projects. So, that's the primary way across the country that affordable renting housing is developed. And a lot of times, home does act as gap financing for that. Other opportunities to use home is when you're working with a housing authority. If you're partnering with a housing authority on a larger deal, those are also opportunities to use home funds. Home is less flexible than CDBG. Out of all of the entitlement programs, CDBG is the most flexible in the sense that you can do a lot more with it. You can only use home for housing, whereas CDBG, you can use it for public infrastructure. You can use it for economic development and housing. And a lot of times, block grant is applied for home repair programs or let it be from programs.
Do you have more you wanted to continue with?
Well, I can finish my presentation if there aren't any questions at this juncture just yet.
Sure.
Okay. So, the relationship to the con plan to the analysis of impediments. The analysis of impediments is a report that is also required by HUD for communities that receive entitlement funding. And essentially, it's assessing the state of their housing in the community. An requirement that all communities have when they receive CDBG or home funds is to make sure you're addressing for housing issues in your community. And the AI is the planning document that captures what the landscape of fair housing looks like. So, it assesses past policies and programs. It uses data to understand who's disproportionately impacted, which then ties back to the con plan, which requires you to understand who's disproportionately impacted by market and housing conditions. So, those are some of the relationships that the AI has to the con plan process, which is why most communities, when they're starting Which is why most communities, when they're starting a new plan, planning cycle, will update their AI. The Fair Housing Act is.
Yeah, I just. Much of the discussions that's going on in. In our region and in Washington about round housing has to do with affordable housing. And the slide uses the terminology fair housing. As HUD uses that term, is that synonymous or is it something different?
That's a great question and I'm so glad you asked that. So affordable housing is the term a lot of times used that these funding sources can be applied towards. Kind of broad brush. Now, CDBG can be applied to additional activities in addition to affordable housing. Whereas fair housing is referring to the Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-four, which is part of the Civil Rights Act. That requires, so this is a great slide. These are the protected classes, which are specific groups that are protected under the Federal Fair Housing Act. So as part of the responsibility of getting entitlement funds from HUD. All communities have to go through a planning process where they're assessing the state of fair housing. So groups that fall under the protected classes. So here I've outlined three layers of protected classes at the federal level, at the state level, and then local jurisdictions can have their own. So the Fair Housing Act requires that all communities assess. That these groups aren't disproportionately being impacted by local housing issues. So that's the affordable housing and the fair housing piece. Fair housing is speaking to a specific federal policy. Whereas affordable housing is the type of activities that you can use with these programs or funding sources. Was that helpful?
The reference to fair housing is half a century old. And. Are there pitfalls that communities fall in around the fair housing? Rules today? I guess maybe we have not perceived that, that fair housing issues are, are, are a problem. I mean, in fact, the only group that's ever recently that has really made complaints about fair housing issues have been. Folks who are returning from the criminal justice system and are trying to find their, their way into community, hu- hu- housing and, 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 and jobs and things to, to, to do that. So that I'm. So I think that, that, you know, the, the, the challenge is, 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 is affordable housing. And, 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 you know, in, in, in our view, CDBG funds are affordable at the low end. Where, where they're, where they're really looking for. Whereas there is also a greater affordable housing challenge. For, for folks with, 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 with higher incomes, but who can't afford the house that they, that they want. And it's so they take up a house that somebody, somebody else. Might need and then that blocks us. Okay, well, anyway, there's not a question there, so thank you.
I think one thing that's important when you're looking at affordable housing versus fair housing. Again, affordable housing is what you build, but fair housing doesn't necessarily have to be a project. It can be policies that the cities adopted, so infill strategies, affordable housing density bonuses. I mean, things that you're doing to encourage affordable housing, things that you're doing to ensure that, say, veterans' housing isn't being restricted for certain classes. I mean, you've got low income people that have the same access to housing. You're, you're building those, those kind of networks in your community and making sure that, that it's open and inclusive to all. So it's, it's developing housing and then making sure everyone has the same equal and affordable, or sorry, equal access to affordable housing.
I think that's a, that's a good explanation. And just tying it back to protected classes for it to become, using HUD language, a fair housing impediment. It has to disproportionately affect one of these groups, whether it's at the federal level, state level, or the local level. So today, the purpose, objective for today's presentation was to provide a overview of what the con plan is. And what the planning process is and the activities that we're going to be working on. Leading to May. We'll come back to council on April twentieth, when there'll be a public hearing. And then at that juncture, a draft will also be available. And then early May, the final con plan will be available, at which point council will make, make the decision to adopt it. Once council has adopted it, then the city will submit it to HUD.
Great.
Any other questions?
I have a dumb question.
Please.
So is there, does this memo serve as a report for what happened between, for the twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen plan? Like an annual report or a end of cycle plan report then?
From my perspective, the answer is no.
Okay.
What the report is trying to do is outline how we've spent our money since we began these programs back in two thousand. And, and it provides some history about how funds were spent. To give the council some sort of an idea of where you could go with your programs as this moves forward. Is housing affordability the primary concern of the city or is it going to be infrastructure? I can tell the council this evening that we're kind of running out of infrastructure projects. And so we do have a few left, but, you know, that might not be where you wish to place your money in future years. We are going to see incredible demand for affordable housing here in the city of Lakewood. And coming forward in February, I think you're going to receive the annual housing report from the department. Which indicates how much housing we built, how many lots we created, what are the current rental rates and so forth. So that's going to get programmed into the consolidated plan process. But I, I can give you the very, a good feeling right now that, you know, affordable housing is a problem. That you're probably looking at a vacancy rate of roughly around three percent. For multifamily apartments right now. I can tell you as of two thousand eighteen, HUD said that this county was short five thousand residential units. And that's just to keep up with current demand. And that your housing prices now in Lakewood are about three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That's still affordable in relationship to Pierce, to King County. But that will likely go up to on average around four hundred and eighty thousand dollars in two thousand and, at the end of two thousand twenty. So the rates keep going up at about five percent. And we'll go through all this information, we'll give you some housing trends to be looking at for the future years. And, and I think that will help the council decide how you wish to use your consolidated plan funds. I also wanted to speak briefly about the fact that previously Lakewood did a consolidated plan. Tacoma did a consolidated plan and they were separate. Tacoma, which is the lead agency in the consortium, in this case chose to go a different direction. So we're a little bit at their mercy and that's why we're doing consolidated plan for both agencies. So that's a different approach than what we've done in the past. So I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware of this. So this is a kind of a new thing for us as well. But I, I think we are sensitive to the fact that we have our own special needs and we want to make sure that they're addressed in our, our action plan.
Go ahead. What direction did Tacoma decide to go?
I'm sorry?
You said Tacoma went on their own. Where did they go? What, or what direction did they decide to go?
Well, first of all, just a couple of things about Tacoma. They're a little bit behind in their process because they had some significant changes in staff. And so that's sort of an issue that's driving this consolidated plan right now. The direction that they wanted to do was to do one consolidated plan for both agencies, rather than two separate consolidated plans. Separate, one for Lakewood, one for Tacoma. That's one of the major differences this, this time around.
So you're looking for some direction at this point from us?
Yes, if, if the, if the council has some desire that they would like us to look at housing or, you know. Is the issue continuing to work on fixing and repairing existing single family residences? Housing rehabs and so forth? Those are kind of some of the specifics we're looking for, if you're ready.
I'd like to, I don't know, I'm gonna throw something out there. There was a survey, Elway did a community survey that came out and the number one issue on people's minds is homelessness in housing, affordable housing. Our legislators came and spoke to us and we presented our legislative agenda. And it was clear they're really interested in homelessness and affordable housing. I, I think it would be an opportunity lost if we didn't kind of get on the bandwagon and say, for these funds. It likely makes sense, based on what you've identified on page twenty five, to focus on affordable housing and homelessness. I think we can look at the one percent monies more toward youth mental health and other programs in that direction. And maybe these funds should be focused on affordable housing and homelessness. And maybe then, what is it, the ten ninety-six or ten, I always forget the.
Fourteen oh six.
Whatever those things, whatever the acronym is. You know, to do something so it's not just lipstick on a pig, I mean, it's a big issue. And Tacoma likewise recognizes it's a big issue. Our twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth legislators recognize it's a big issue. I think it would be helpful for us to say. We're in to invest in trying to solve that issue as best we can. So that's my thought, but I'm one of seven. But we need to give Mr. Buers some direction.
One, if I may interject, one thing that, that you can think of as well, when you're doing the funds, you can, you can coordinate funds. I mean, while you have a home funding pool and you have a CDBG funding pool, it doesn't mean you can't use a project that incorporates both CDBG and home. Yeah, so we, we've done that in, in years past and that's, that's a great way to actually kind of stretch the, the funding. Cause we're typically looking at five hundred thousand for CDBG and half of that for home, so.
Yeah, it's not a ton of money.
No.
That's why that other. Whatever that thing is, fourteen oh six, fifteen ninety-six, whatever the heck it is. Would add something to it.
And if I read correctly, twenty percent goes to program oversight? So whatever we see here, we should just deduct twenty percent to, okay.
Well, you know, I. Again, I think, I think that, 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 that housing is an overarching issue. But I think that there are ways to get at the, the quality of housing and. Rather than the quality of individual units, the quality of neighborhoods. Okay, which is, you know, that I think that we, we, we have had a history of looking at saying. Let's bring up the quality of life in some of our, in, in our neighborhoods. And that the most effective way to do that has been some investments in infrastructure. That over the past. Couple of bienniums, we have invested in neighborhoods, particularly on the eastern, east side of Lakewood. With some infrastructure improvements and in some cases combining where. Where there was, there was CDBG money in, in, involved. Along with the money that came from the, to the Transportation Improvement District. Which is now has their funding in, 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 in limbo. So that, you know, I, I, I think that we need to, at least at this juncture. Okay, ask staff to go forward of saying that we would be, we're interested in housing, but that we're also interested in. In infrastructure projects that, you know, improve. The nature of housing or set the table for housing to be developed. We've used putting sewers in, whereas Habitat for Humanity is not. Constrains themselves that they won't, they, they, they won't build homes in, 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 in parcels that aren't served by sewers and things like that. And I know on Washington Street in, 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 in Telukum, we use CDBG dollars to put. To put a, a sewer line in down to a lot that was then going to be later developed by Habitat for Humanity. So I think there is that continued balance that keeps infrastructure and housing as our top two priorities. That homelessness is a, is, is, is a very different issue. Because this is money that's designed to help neighborhoods, low income neighborhoods, things, census tracts that are there. The homeless population is. Somewhat migrant, okay? You know, which you, you, you can't, you don't really tie them to, to a neighborhood. You see them in a specific spot and you see them someplace else, but that they're not necessarily going off. So while I think that there are. Strategies that can be proposed to us, strategies that we can engage with that would. Deal with homelessness and underlying causes of it. That, that, that most of the homelessness that we're seeing in Lakewood isn't because there isn't a house. It's that the people that are there have problems and the barriers to themselves getting into one of those houses or apartments. To be able to do that or wanting to get into one of those houses or apartments or being able to navigate it. So, you know, you don't build your way out of homelessness. So I, I, I look forward to having some discussion as this process goes through or to where we, where we sort of refine things. You know, housing is clearly a part of the discussion, but not to the overwhelming priority over. Other things that it might be used for. Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So we had the discussion about the fourteen oh six and I, I agreed with staff's recommendation then that it was a rehabilitation issue. We have a, a lot of housing that's probably in fact underutilized because it's in such poor condition. People certainly don't want to move into neighborhoods where, where those act, you know, with those conditions. So I'm all for pushing the fourteen oh six towards rehabilitation. I'm, I'm all for talking about how we're handling the home money, which is still a big percentage of what we spend. I'm with council member Branstadter and I've always been a supporter of using the CDBG money in the proper neighborhoods. To improve those neighborhoods because I've always said, you know, poor people deserve decent infrastructure too. They deserve sidewalks, they deserve streetlights and they deserve parks. So if, if staff needs help in trying to identify areas of investment in low income neighborhoods, which probably make up of almost two thirds of the city. We, we can, we can work with, with staff on that. I would note that the housing thing, and I, and I, and I go back to this every time on the housing thing. It's very complex here in the state of Washington. There's a steadfast desire on the part of the state legislature not to make any changes to the Growth Management Act. Which I believe deep down is a big cause of what's going on here. This area has been growing since in the post-World War Two period. My parents moved to the Northwest in nineteen fifty. It was growing then, it's growing now, people like to move here. So, so then we, we slapped on the Growth Management Act and King County accepted it with gusto, with gusto. They wrote very severe, very tough UGA lines, you know. Their, their urban growth boundaries are much smaller actually in some respects than. Than, than Pierce counties, which were very expansive. And you'll still hear people say Pierce County's UGA is too big. Mr. Buers heard that time and time again. I believe it's too big because anybody who knows anything about the subject has said it's too big. So, and, and keep in mind, there are also cities that still are actively discouraging housing development, right? We've got them in, in Pierce County. We've got cities that have slapped on moratoriums, we have never slapped on a moratorium. The cities up in King County have incredibly high impact.
The cities up in King County have incredibly high impact fees. They have school impact fees, they have parks impact fees, they have road impact fees, they might even have fire impact fees nowadays, I don't know. We don't have any of those. So, you know, I think we already encourage development. Our problem has always been, and will continue to be for the foreseeable future, the decayed state of a large portion of our housing base, which impacts, has ripple effects throughout the city. And I think we just need to keep working on that. But I also like the fact that we're still using a good portion on physical infrastructure in poorer neighborhoods. But I would also like to list of the things that we have spent the money on in those, because I'm a little, I know we used it on one hundred and twenty-third, we've used it on one hundred and eighth, but I'm not quite sure where we're going, or what else we've done. And I noticed that back in the early two thousands, they were spending a lot, and so I don't know, but you had more money.
Yeah, I have one specific project that I've been thinking about, and I've talked to Public Works about them. And when we initially started doing infrastructure projects, it was low-income neighborhoods, schools, children, how do they get to their schools? Can they, do they have sidewalks? Do they have a street line if they get to their schools? So we hit a lot of the neighborhoods in Woodbrook, we hit a lot of the, or schools in Woodbrook, Tillicum, some in the east side. The school that I think we've neglected probably the most is Clover Park. I mean, as you all drive down Davison here and try to get to Clover Park, there's kids walking all over the street, there's no sidewalks to get to that. That is a low-income neighborhood. It does qualify. We, two years ago, we did one hundred and eighth street roadway improvement, so we did ADA improvements along from one hundred and eighth to Bridgeport, basically to connect that up. Now, we could go from that intersection, Davison and one hundred and eighth, to Clover Park School District. So there's a way where we could spend monies to improve the lives of low-income students, literally right here in the town center. Yeah, I'd have to look at where we put them on one hundred and twelfth. I mean, it's, that's going to be more of a connector road, so typically you put them on local housing streets rather than busy infrastructure streets. One hundred and eighth was a little different, because it went, it's the only road through a low-income neighborhood. One hundred and twelfth is kind of a connection, major thoroughfare.
We've also used some dollars affiliated with Sound Transit projects for multimodal improvements over in the Lakeview neighborhood, and so we're not done with that yet either. There's also going to be the Lakewood Station Subarea Plan. We're going to probably hope to use that as a future program or project to help us with funding in the future for other off-site improvements.
So, on the more housing front, and I would be all for if we found something where we could help with the infrastructure that would help somebody get some housing built, rather than them having, if you really feel like it's going to be affordable housing, that we can help with some of that if it's in the, that Lakeview neighborhood or something like that. I don't know if those opportunities ever come up, or how would you use that, or various things like that.
The city manager and I have had some discussions about the Lakewood Subarea, excuse me, the Lakewood Station Subarea. One of the comments that we've had is limiting the mitigation fees, that would be part of a planned action ordinance. And we've also started talking about mending the subarea proposal to include a LURF proposal, so we can start addressing some of these infrastructure needs and do a two-for-one. So that's something that's also under review. And you mentioned housing, I have to mention this real briefly. We've had this program in place for about two years now, and the manager asked me for some information in the Spring, in the Woodbrook neighborhood. We've performed four hundred and ninety-six inspections on rental housing units in the Springbrook neighborhood. Now, that's a proportion of the total, and I would say that the majority of them now meet minimum code requirements, so that's a positive. I'm not speaking to mobile home parks, and we do have some mobile home, some apartment complexes with some significant issues that we'll be addressing. But over time, within the five-year period cycle of the rental housing program, I think you're going to see a dramatic improvement upon existing housing. And I do think that by having that program, it also slows down the efforts of gentrification. So there are some things underway that are positive, we just need to keep moving forward. Yeah. The amount of building permits that people have had to apply for, to improve these apartment complexes, the Merrill Creek Apartments on Bridgeport Way was incredible.
Or Sealy Lake.
Or Sealy Lake, because they did not, they let the place fall apart. So that would have not happened without rental housing.
Very good. Mr. Confield, you're next.
In your packet this evening, there's two letters, two draft letters. The first is to the Pierce Transit Board of Commissioners, and it's in response to their Destination 2040 Plan, which they recently rolled out, and quite frankly, it's actually very, very well done. We're certainly supportive of it. The purpose of the letter is to, again, communicate to Pierce Transit that while we are very supportive of Bus Rapid Transit, we do not want to see it end at Pacific Highway South and one oh eighth, but rather, as this body has talked about for the last few years, going back to Sound Transit Three, we would like to see BRT go all the way down Pacific Highway South, connecting to the Springbrook neighborhood, all the way down to Tillicum and JBLM. So that's the purpose of the letter, and Ms. Spear drafted that. And so our recommendation is to move forward with submitting this letter pursuant to this body's review, and if you have any comments or suggestions. The second letter is in reaction to the State Supreme Court ruling, I think it was last week or the week before, that only the state legislature has the authority regarding things such as clean fuel standard, not Department of Ecology, of which the case, of which was the case in question that the Supreme Court ruled on. Likewise, we also believe that that would apply to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, which is proposing a four-county clean fuel standard. And back in December, this body submitted a letter opposing that, with a number of questions, by the way. And so we are recommending a follow-up letter, further elaborating the recent ruling by the State Supreme Court and asking them to address that, but also reiterating our position that we oppose it. And again, it was a letter that was drafted by Ms. Spear, so again, if there's any questions or suggestions there. So with that, Deputy Mayor, I'll pause to see what you folks would like to do here.
Any questions on that, Mr. Branstadter?
With respect to the letter to Pierce Transit, and there's a section in there that talks about encouraging what the final BRT route along from downtown Tacoma along South Tacoma Way, Pacific Highway, and what we'd like to see there. That the current Route Three travels, you know, I guess it goes down one hundred and eighth, and then it goes down briefly on Pacific Highway, and then down South Tacoma Way. But one of the things that I would not want to encourage them is to change the route where Route Three services and goes to, stops at the Tacoma Mall Transit Center. In some of the neighborhoods that I've talked to folks, that's viewed as a significant employment center by folks that would like to do that, and one of the problems that has been, has been making sure that there is public transportation that would be able to get folks back and forth there, even more so than folks wanting to get downtown. So that would want that route, while it covers the route that says in the letter, but somehow insert serving the Tacoma Mall. It would be a preferred thing to do that, because I think that's, that would be a significant destination for folks in our neighborhoods, that would, a place where they would like to get to in an expeditious manner that didn't take so much time to be able to get to work.
Anyone else? Mr. Farmer?
Don't forget to update your letterhead, please.
Oh, good point.
And also the CCs. Thank you.
That only happens after we get rid of the letterhead that's already been printed.
Right. But August.
Yeah. Good point. Any other questions on the letter? Any comments, feedback for the manager? I think it looks pretty good. What are you hearing on the street on the, I know the EDB is writing a letter similar to this, to the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency advising of their...
We provided them our letters.
Good, that's good. So what's going to happen in the legislature? Aren't they going to do something? I heard that they were trying to pass something on this issue to avoid having the regulatory agency overstep its authority.
I think they're still on their heels right now. I don't know if they'll be able to have a bill that will meet the cutoff this session, but certainly next session. You know, the governor was the one who was driving something through Department of Ecology at the administrative level as opposed to legislative level, so.
Got it, got it.
And by the way, that's where it belongs. This is a statewide discussion with the state legislature, so.
Very good. Well, it sounds like you got authority to go forward with the two letters as drafted, with the corrections to the letterhead and the CC line, to make sure Councilmember Farmer is included post-January.
I'm still scrubbing.
Very good.
Next up, on Monday, next Monday evening, you'll be having your annual joint meeting with the Clover Park School District. School Superintendent and I met on Friday afternoon to review a draft agenda that I believe should be before you, in front of you. There's a lot of items here, and I'd just like to go down them one by one. So the first is, just to share a memo that, you know, the city and the school district have put together, outlining the number of partnerships that we have, and the last time we did this was in 2018, which I think that was the first time we did it. And so we've updated it. It's a little bit more comprehensive than what we've had in the past. For example, we included information about, in the most recent past, the Safe Routes to School program that the city has, as well as a number of resolutions and proclamations that this body has done in support of a number of school district initiatives, so just a kind of an example there. And then, and again, not to get into detail, but rather just, here it is, and maybe just, I was going to hit on some highlights, and that was it. And then kick it off with maybe showing, you know, the videos on our Building Your Better campaign, imaging campaign here in the city of Lakewood. And the reason being is because the school district was actually intimately involved in that, when we kicked that off about almost two years ago now. And so, you know, we thought that that would be a kind of, you know, a nice, you know, just to share that with them. Next up is a continuation of a discussion from the last joint meeting last year, which was to draft a joint use agreement for, you know, facilities and fields uses between our respective agencies. And really, this is memorializing what's already happening. This is a very common best business practice that school districts and their cities have. And I know Councilmember Simpson and School Board Member Jacobs represented their respective bodies on that. And so our Park and Rec Director and the Assistant Superintendent have pulled together a draft, and I know we presented this to you back in early December, if I recall. So having a discussion on that, both the superintendent and I thought would be valuable. The next item actually started off with the superintendent talking about their efforts regarding college and career readiness, and then we thought it would be beneficial to incorporate, you know, the discussion or the policy and our vision and our goals and objectives to have a highly educated workforce. It's kind of combining those two as one discussion between, again, be led by the two bodies here. The fourth item is, actually, most of this came from this body, the issue of youth suicide, mental health, services, and bullying, but also special education. And so, again, combining that as one topic between the two respective legislative bodies. The school district has an interest in providing you an update on safety and security, kind of the hard assets within their infrastructure, as well as an update on just basic K through twelve education. I think, as I've mentioned to you, they have an interest in wanting the city to hire, it would have to be four standalone police officers dedicated for SRO, it would essentially triple their costs. The chief and I...
Triple their costs?
Triple their costs. The chief and I have met with the superintendent on this. We're not quite sure what problem they're trying to solve. So we think that the program that we have right now is working actually very, very well. The school district thinks that as well, so we're not quite sure what they're doing here.
Who's going to lead the discussion on that?
They will, they will. However, I am providing, I am including in your packet the fiscal analysis that we did, as well as, you know, what the school district would have to do. For example, you know, if this was to come to fruition, well, first of all, it's going to take a couple of years to hire four brand-new police officers, and then have them become SROs, or have other officers become SROs after those, their current positions are backfilled. And so as soon as those positions are hired, even though they're not SROs, the school district's going to have to pay for them. You know, our general fund does not have the capacity to subsidize another municipality. So, you know, if it's something that the two respective bodies want to do, that's great, but it's very, very expensive. And again, right now, this program is funded as an off-duty program with our existing police officers, and again, is working very, very well.
And they want four additional FTEs?
Well, they want three, but having, but it would require a sergeant, because there's no way the patrol sergeant would be able to, would be able to absorb proper supervision of those three officers who are moving between different schools throughout the day, on a full-time basis, so. The eighth item is Community Engagement Leadership Team, which I think the school district kicked off a couple of years ago, so they'd like to provide an update on that. And then the last item actually came from the city, and I propose this based on last couple of, two or three council liaison reports to the school board on questions on, you know, kind of what's happening in the city. And I thought it'd be beneficial to give them perhaps like a five-minute snapshot on our 2020 projects for transportation and parks. And then maybe our Economic Development Manager actually has a very nice new, about a twenty-minute presentation on economic development...
Great.
...to provide, again, the school board a snapshot of kind of some of the major economic development initiatives that are occurring in the city. So this would be a thirty-minute update here. So this is probably about a two-hour meeting.
At least.
But certainly, but certainly if there are things that you would like to not see on here, or again, things that you would like to see on here... on here, or again, things that you would like to see on here, this is your meeting. So this is in draft.
Can I ask a question since you discussed this with the superintendent? I'm a little bit uncomfortable on number four, where we have special education next to youth suicide, mental health services and bullying. I think if I was the parent of a special needs child, I would be a little bit miffed at that. And I think I would just say mental health services. I think, I think we kind of keep getting back to this one incident that occurred. I mean, several incidents have occurred, but.
Or youth mental health needs. Because I know Ron is big on youth mental health.
Yeah, and I think we need to have that discussion because that's something, if we go forward with the one-tenth, or if the county goes forward with the one-tenth, the school district is gonna need to be thinking about, you know, where do they, do they want to fit into this discussion going forward for some of that funding? Or do they, do they want to go it alone?
Probably depends on their loving.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yes, 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 yes. I agree that special education is misplaced in the agenda of being paired with those other items. You could pair it with basic education, with basic and special education and do that. That the, the only other thought that I would have that we might at least mention as planting a seed for going to the future is somehow indicating them that I think it'd be appropriate for the city to have a role in planning whatever grand opening there would be for the Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School. And while that's a little bit away, the time for planning for it is not that far away. And I think that the city has things that we could contribute to that and a role to do and sort of would like to just at least voice that, that we, when they get around to it, would like to them include us with, in their, in their planning team.
Good point.
So this will be my first joint meeting. So again, with the inquisitive nature of this. Is it possible for there to be, how to phrase, a purpose and goal statement for what we want to get out of each of these, or a way to phrase them? For example, I love the idea of starting with the Build Your Better Here imaging campaign and the obvious call to action there is that, you know, we can follow an email to all participants with all the links and we can ask people to share. It's, it's a nice thing to do, but it also goes a lot farther. We potentially will have a nice audience, and so it's a great opportunity for there to be in action. Our city-school district partnerships, I'm, as a new person, I'm anxious to see what, you know, what we possibly could do with that knowledge. The joint use agreement, we'll have a discussion, and the goal will be possibly to bring that back to our body or to their body. You see where I'm going with this? I'm trying to, I want to make sure there's a "there" there. It's great to have some updates and some presentations, but I want to, it would be lovely to see if whatever we are doing will help us do our jobs better, help them do their jobs better, and if there's anything that we, that sparks some amazing inspiration or innovation, we decide that we want to go forward together.
Good point. Some of these are probably general updates to spur discussion, but should have an outcome, anticipated outcome, agree with us? Sometimes we'll get to an outcome through some of the discussion on some of these points. I'm hopeful. You mean an outcome from the discussion? I forget whether he's back in the third or not. I don't think he is.
Yes, he is back. So he'll be late because he's attending the going-away event.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So I think he'll be here about seven-thirty or so.
Okay. Sorry to disappoint you. The dynamic?
May I add something to this?
True. Yeah, just so.
You can, Paul?
I'm hopeful that it's more of a discussion as opposed to a presentation. And I think from chatting at the CELT meetings, I believe that would be their hope as well. If it becomes too presentation-like, we lose the opportunity to really have some meaningful discussion to hopefully lead to some outcomes that we can agree on and hopefully try to achieve, but that would be my hope. It's more of an inclusive discussion with all of us. There's gonna be a lead person with the topic, I assume, whether it's Ron Banner or a facilities person or whatever, but I think it would be helpful to have all of us engaged. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to try and answer your question, Councilmember Farmer. And I go back to something I said several weeks ago. Deputy Mayor Whelan has a good point, that maybe there will be outcomes. And I'm emphasizing the word maybe. And I'm gonna say that for a reason. We have our lane and they have their lane. And I see this as a discussion between, as somebody said earlier tonight, two municipalities, and that we tread lightly if we are looking for outcomes. Does that make sense? This is based on empirical data extending back six years. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I think certainly when we had the defined outcomes of surplusing Woodbrook, that was something that was a kind of a challenging conversation because that wasn't quite their lane that they're ready for yet. But I think, I think they're in a position now, and again, and just speaking from my experience, having sat in the CELT meetings with two or three of the board members, that they're really hopeful to have this as kind of a win-win relationship, where we're all kind of rowing in the same direction as best we can within our respective lanes for the benefit of the community.
And I would hope that that is, comes to fruition.
Yeah.
However, on other issues, I sense, A, you stay in your lane, we'll stay in our lane or silo, and you, in a sense to me, it has come across as you mind your business and we'll mind our business.
I'd say keep an open mind. You might be pleasantly surprised.
I agree, I perhaps. I hope we have clarified and elucidated your question.
Anything else, Mr. Garfield?
So I see some, I need some direction. So on item number four, what would you like to do there?
Let me just call it that particular category, mental health services, student mental health services.
Student mental health, okay. And then separate-
Services and slash needs, and that'll lead Ron Banner into a good discussion.
Student mental health services and-
Needs, and then you can drop special education down to basic education and-
Well, yeah, well, that's theirs. The special education item is theirs.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's theirs.
And the other one was ours?
The other three were yours. A separate standalone item, okay. And then, and then remove youth suicide and bullying and incorporate that under student mental health services and needs.
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I think they might have some data, by the way, regarding issues of youth suicide and bullying in terms of how they, how they manage those issues.
Yeah, Mr. Banner will tell you that it's a growing concern around the country, I think, and it would be helpful to hear from him, from his perspective, and the increasing need for mental health services in the schools because of what he sees and his colleagues see. Probably can chat about that as well.
And then, and then add the grand opening for Dr. Claudia Thomas Middle School?
Sure. As a discussion point, how we might be able to collaborate.
That's correct. They're hosting this year, that's correct. Yeah, you guys go back and forth.
Got it.
So then, Councilmember Farmer mentioned purpose and outcome, so I need some direction there. What are you looking for?
Do, 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 do. I think, well.
I think that on the agenda, the meeting should close with some sort of agreement on all this of those things.
Action items.
Essentially come up with some action items that we're going to pursue.
Flowing from the-
You know, like, well, I agree that we each have lanes, we each have to move away from what I would have said ten years ago.
Silos, yeah.
People, people had lanes and they didn't want to ask for any help. And in this particular case, we and they should ask for help where help is, can be provided.
You know, in that spirit, point number two makes that very well. John, if there's any way we could work that into the agenda and say this is a good example of cooperation between the city and the school district, point number two, please add.
Well, you're gonna see, you know, the partnerships that we have, if you remember from two years ago, is we do quite a bit together.
So to answer your question, it sounds like we can have some sort of encapsulation, you know, action items and next steps.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
One of those would be the joint use agreement.
I was gonna say, next steps and action items.
Yeah.
And I didn't mean to imply that it had to be so overt that there was a column on the agenda that said, here's the topic and here's the outcome, and discussion to shalance through for thirty-seven minutes and that sort of thing. If we're putting together a presentation on something and there seems to us to be an obvious call to action, or, or a couple of discussion points that if I am leading the discussion, I might say, so here, here's the presentation and here are a couple of things we might want to consider. It would be good to bring those up rather than just saying, here's a presentation. So just a little forethought.
Okay. Some of these are, just the way they're structured, they're more presentation-ish, I think.
Updates.
Updates, yeah.
Updates. And that's clear. It's just an update, doesn't have to be, you know.
And the other thing too, is the superintendent and I, we're just carrying forward the items that our respective legislative bodies provided us. So, you know, he's not, you know, most of these items from the school district are gonna be led by the board, just like, with the exception of a couple of updates that I've suggested, you know, like, for example, the now you consolidate the mental health, student mental health services and needs, you know, that's, that's you folks. I don't plan on having a staff report or a staff presentation on that or anything.
So that's our topic that we're-
That's your topic. That's correct.
I also think that if we had put the topic on the list, maybe-
Yeah, that's a tough one for us to present it.
No, they, no, they didn't, because they did not have that on their list.
Huh, interesting.
The ones, the ones they had on the list were, you know, number, number three, special education, safety and security, basic education, SRO and CELT. Those were their, those were their items.
Okay. Well, you know, as I sit here today, I wouldn't know what to tell them about student mental health needs in their district. That would be a tough, tough topic for me to even begin to lead.
Well, but I do think that we can tell them that we have become a sounding board for those concerns by the youth council, by people in the community to be able to, to, to go and do that. And thus, that's the reason why we were sort of want to be able to, A, have some idea about, you know, how they assess from the inside that situation to do that. And as just mentioned, that if we were to ever move forward with enacting the one-tenth or one percent for mental health, and that needs to be things that are not supplanting existing things, you know, are there some, some things, 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 things that are, that are there that are best practices from around school districts that they, that they've learned to do that? So I think that-
It sounds like we can key the topic off. I'm sure Superintendent Banner would probably have some great thoughts or comments, and then our, as an opportunity for a nice discussion between the boards, how can we better help you in this regard as a city, the program and such? Yep.
So, so I've, yeah, I would, I would back up Mike on that. I mean, the youth council has, has, you know, in discussions that we've had a couple of times, expressed some concerns about the amount of mental health counseling. I think I wouldn't, I would stay away from the thing in counseling in general, that there's not enough, because I think that that ties into the bullying, that some of the things are just not getting resolved, simply perhaps because of a workload issue. But that if we talk about mental health counseling because we're concerned as a community that these, that if there is a suicide, it does really, does impact the youth of our community. And that there perhaps may be an opportunity to, for the districts, and I, and I would put that in plural, to be part of the discussion, should the one-tenth, the one percent go forward, to try to access some, some mental health funding. I think it's a bug we need to put in their ear because I think it's something new for them, and, and my concern will be their first reaction will be, no, that's our business, right? And so, and which would be a natural reaction, I think, and because they got the state and they've got, they've got other stakeholders involved, and then to, I just want to present this as, this opportunity may come down the pike, and it's not gonna come, it's either gonna come from us or perhaps the county, rather than the state, or be imposed on you from some other area that they, that they need to, you know, I think maybe the audience there really is the superintendent, who can then, you know, put that in the back of his head and say, okay, that may be out there and that may be something that we, we want to discuss internally. That's about all I would say on that subject, really, because after that, we don't know. We're just expressing, I think, our concerns as conveyed by the youth council, and that there may, may be opportunities in the future to actually look for outside sources of funding to help with overall mental health caseworkers in the, in the schools.
Last week, the Tacoma Pierce County EDB hosted a tour here in Lakewood with a German aerospace company called EIS Aircraft, and there was also EIS Aircraft. And also, there was a representative from Washington State Commerce there, and so our very own Economic Development Manager, Becky Newton, was able to help facilitate that. Fortunately, I was caught up in some legislative issues and I wasn't able to attend. But EIS is a major supplier to Airbus. However, they just signed a contract with Boeing, requiring, requiring them to expand into the United States. And- And, uh, so they're looking here in Pierce County. And so, uh, our team provided them a, a tour of some ideas here in Lakewood, including the, uh, Starlight Distribution Center, which is coming out of the ground right now. In addition, uh, Dr. Love Day over at the Culver Park Technical College, uh, provided them a, a tour and overview of the brand-new advanced manufacturing training facility that just opened up about six months ago or so. So, uh, we'll see what happens, but, uh, I want to thank the EDB for, um, bringing that potential opportunity here to Lakewood. They would be, um, they would probably start off with about ten or twelve employees, and then eventually maybe over a number of years, growing to forty or fifty, so. But the, I'm not quite sure what they make, actually.
Give me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Couple of, or.
Oh, there are hundreds, hundreds, hundreds of them. Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, 'cause, uh, you know, Boeing and Everett, they do two things. One is they design aircraft, and then the aircraft parts are built all over, not just the United States, but actually overseas. For example, the cockpit and the nose is built in Japan. Parts of the tail are built in Italy, and the list goes on. And then they're, the wings are built down in Frederickson. And then they're all shipped up to Everett or to Renton, and then they put the puzzles together. So they, they do the front end and they do the back end, so. So that's why, um, quite frankly, Boeing could leave the Pacific Northwest over time and go someplace else, because they can do both of those things someplace else, so. I think, uh, y'all might be aware, you know, Sound Transit for years has been looking at building a, a maintenance facility down off of Lakeview, where still looking Boulevard in Lakeview, as they have all of that property down there. So they're beginning to move forward, and they're gonna undertake a design-build initiative. However, some not-so-good news is, apparently there's an existing thirty-six-inch stormline that's cutting across their property, that's, goes right under where they want to build their building. Now typically, okay, you can't build your building there. However, there was an easement that was drafted in the nineteen-seventies that says that whoever the utility owner is, has the responsibility for the cost of relocating that if somebody ever wants to build on that property, 'cause it's just an easement. Yes. So the good news is that Sound Transit is gonna be building their maintenance facility, which is a good thing. The not-so-good news is that it's gonna cost the city quite a bit of money to move that stormwater line, so. We are gonna, yes, we, we inherited that, uh, when we assumed the utility from, from Pierce County, when the city incorporated, so. We, it's bigger than a breadbox. Bigger than a breadbox. That's what we know right now. Thirty-six inches.
Can't figure out how to put that up on the water.
It's a stormwater utility, so, no deputy mayor, so. But I just wanted to give you a kind of a courtesy heads-up on that, and, um, you know, that's something that we'll have to incorporate into, uh, you know, our CIP and our stormwater capital fund. I, who knows? Who knows? It was, that was, it was probably, it was built decades ago, obviously, but, but the easement agreement goes back to the early nineteen-seventies, yeah. It's an easement, so we are required, as the owner of the, of the, of the easement and the, and the pipe, to move it. Yeah. So we have double and triple-checked that language, so.
But move it is not the same as remove it.
So, actually, um.
Uh, you know, uh, they're gonna be building on that, they're gonna have to make arrangements for all the stormwater that's generated on that particular site, I guess, and, you know, and, and I'm trying to think, where are we moving stormwater from and to through that? You know, is that necess, do we necessarily have to use the same from and tos to be able to go and do that when we look for the options that we, that we have to just get the pipe out of the ground so they can build?
So we'll be looking at that as part of the design-build process, but the challenge is, is a thirty-six-inch pipe, so it's accommodating something, someplace, and connecting from one point to another, so.
Those are kind of easy.
I don't, I don't know the exact, the, the exact layout.
I mean.
We just, we just learned this, like, late, last week on Thursday, so.
If it's going to a school.
I, I, I don't know the exact layout, council member, so again, we just learned about this, so, but we've got more work to do, so as part of the design-build process, so.
Sending water to Ward's Lake.
For water.
So some good news, uh, switching gears, so, uh, last week, the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board formally approved a seat for the City of Lakewood, as well as the City of Redmond, Port Orchard. So, um, uh, they will need to conform, confirm who a voting member is of this body, as well as an alternate. And, uh, so I'm gonna place that, unless there's any objection, on your next regular meeting, for your consideration and action on February eighteenth, which is a Tuesday. And then the next PSRC executive board meeting that the representative will attend is on, um, Thursday, February twenty-seventh. So the executive board meets every fourth Thursday in Seattle from ten A, ten AM to about eleven-thirty, sometimes noon. Very rarely does the meeting go longer than that, because the Sound Transit Executive Committee Board meeting is at one PM, and a lot of folks that are on that PSRC executive board transition over to the Sound Transit one, so. Um, one of the things I asked, um, the PSRC executive directors, you know, whoever are the representatives, is there some kind of orientation that newly-electeds go through? And he said that that would be something that they could accommodate as well. Uh, Police Week is coming up, as well as a, as a part of that, there's gonna be a Unity Tour Bike Ride from May eighth through eleventh. It's a four-day bicycle ride from Florham Park, New Jersey, to Washington DC. The purpose of the ride is to raise funds for the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington DC, and if those of you who have been there, it's, um, pretty amazing, uh, site. It's two hundred and fifty miles, and so we are gonna actually have four police officers who are participating then, participating in that. And then we're gonna be sending two motor officers with their bikes to actually participate as, as escorts for those four days. So that's from May eighth through the eleventh. And then, uh, during Police Week, which is May eleventh through the fifteenth, um, we're gonna have a number of police officers who are gonna be attending, you know, the event on their personal time. However, we are gonna be sending three members of our honor guard to participate in the formal capacity at a number, at a number of events, um, during, during that time period. So just wanted to give the council a heads-up on that. Let's see, uh, our communications manager wanted me to pass on that, you know, with Veterans Drive and Onyx Drive sidewalk project coming up, we've established a stand, updated and established a standalone webpage for both of those projects, so, um, so we've got that information out there. Um, on a legislative front, uh, one of our key initiatives, which is the, um, reinstitution of the LRF, the, uh, Local Revitalization Financing Tool, um, AWC, uh, has prepared a bill, and the City of Lakewood was, um, instrumental in drafting that. Twenty-eight oh four, and it's gonna be scheduled for a public hearing next Wednesday on February fifth at ten AM, so we're very pleased with that. Last week, um, myself and, uh, Shannon Kelly Fong, we're down in Olympia, and we're able to get, uh, five signatures on a letter asking for, uh, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on our other priority, which is the multimodal study within the I-five corridor between, you know, essentially Lakewood and Dupont. And, uh, so we're waiting on a sixth signature, um, but again, we got, we got five signatures and got a lot of positive feedback and a lot of good support on, on that, in terms of the folks that we, that we spoke with.
Who do you have coming down and testify for either of you seeing the bill?
Um, well, I plan on going down and testifying on, on that bill, and certainly if any of you'd like to come down and testify.
I was saying, if you're prepared, spoke at the EDV about that need, so you may be a good person to chat with. I'm sure there's plenty of.
Yeah, I get all kinds of, uh, I've been, I've been chasing this for over twenty-two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, maybe longer, actually. And then we're gonna be asking for an amendment, uh, from the twenty-eighth district, or twenty-ninth district, or both, um, that, that the bill, and we purposely left, left this out so that they could, you know, do this, um, is to allow the LRF to be used to move a public facility, like WashDOT, and then secondly, to increase the ceiling to be up to two million dollars a year, so. I think right now the cap is, oh, gosh, it might be a million, so. Representative Kilduff, you might remember last year, she had a bill, House Bill eighteen-twenty-five, which addressed the placement of sexually violent predators, which is a state term, coming off of McNeil Island, as well as the issue of fair share principles, where having sexually violent predators be returned to their county of origin, as opposed to in Lakewood, over at eighty-sixth and Custer, for example, where there were three. And so she is working on a similar bill this session to further tighten that down. And so I had a conversation with her briefly last week on it, and, uh, so she is asking, um, for a review and a report on other adequate, less restrictive alternative facilities other than adult family homes that sexually violent predators can be placed into. And then if a county lacks those services, which a number of counties do, that's why they end up in Pierce County, particularly Lakewood and Tacoma, um, then DSHS must present a plan to procure those adequate services for those LRA placements. So, this is a good bill. And, uh, so she's hoping that she will be able to work out some of the technical issues she's working through right now, and hopefully she can get a public hearing between now and February seventh, and of course, you know, this is one that we would definitely want to support, so. And then on the legislative front, there's, um, you know, we, we were down there last week and again this week, supporting a couple of bills. This afternoon, Councilmember Bransetter and I spoke, um, in support at, actually, again, Representative Kilduff, um, last week asked me to come down and testify in support of a bill relating to, uh, rail safety, particularly that the UTC sha, share their rail safety inspection reports with, you know, either cities, or more importantly, WashDOT and the rail industry, 'cause right now those are not shared. And, uh, and then the other bill was Senator O'Ban, and he called me and asked to come down and testify, actually very similar to a bill that Representative Levitt had a couple of weeks ago, that I briefed you on, which is that, um, the powers that be, Sound Transit, Amtrak, and WashDOT Rail not reinstitute Amtrak through the Point Defiance Bypass Rail Corridor until all of the NTSB, um, recommendations have been, have been implemented. So, um, not companion bills, but very, very similar. So we testified in favor of that as well. And then, um, tomorrow, uh, beginning in the afternoon, AWC is having their annual legislative event, uh, that'll run through, uh, Wednesday, um, midmore, um, mid-afternoon or so. I know Councilmember Bransetter and I are attending, as well as, um, Shannon Kelly Fong, so there'll be three, at least three of us down there, so. And, uh, and then, uh, looking out into the weekend, um, on Saturday morning at ten AM over at Harrison Prep, is the seventeenth annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration. And then later that evening, um, I ran into Diane Formosa, and just a friendly reminder that she's having her, she asked me to pass on to you, that having her annual caring-for-kids Happy Hearts Dinner and Auction over at the McGavick Center, and if you're interested in attending, please reach out to her, tickets are forty dollars each, so. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you very much.
On the Onyx Drive standalone webpage for that project, very cool, will a letter or a postcard go out to all the affected residents that?
Yeah, they are, they're in the pri, I don't know if they've already sent it out, but they will be sending out information to all of them, yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, yes. Actually, there's gonna be a bunch of, uh, you know, booths and such, like we've had before, so actually, in all seriousness, getting there at nine fifteen or nine thirty is probably a better time to be there, rather than ten AM. County proclamation, city clerk?
I don't know, I will not be attending that or Diane's thing that day, I've got a family matter to attend to, but.
Actually, um, I got a call from, from both, so Representative Kilduff called me, left me a voicemail while we were traveling back here, and was very, very appreciative of us showing up, and then Senator O'Ban, um, was also very appreciative of us, you know, there's not too many cities, by the way, that go down there and as regularly as we do to testify on a number of bills. You know, part of that, part of that is because of our proximity, you know, I know I get, myself and our staff, we get asked to come down, especially by AWC, but also just by our own delegation, um, being asked to come down on such a regular, that, that's, that's more of an exception than the norm, quite frankly.
So, so this would be the extent of my remarks, actually, my council remarks too, but I want to mention it while, while you're sitting here. So I, I really did appreciate the, uh, JBLM tour today. Very informative, I, I really did appreciate seeing, I, I see bits and pieces of the base on very irregular, uh, situations. One of the things that I mentioned to the city manager was, and, and I'm trying to think, I, I think I heard it in my day job from, from there, uh, from the county's, uh, uh, person about issues, uh, licensing issues for spouses of, um, of people who, who move here, uh, for military service, and their, their, and sometimes inabilities to, to get through. And I, and I think, and, and we discussed it, that this is something we're in favor of, some kind of reform, I, I, but state agencies really are holding up on it. But my remark really is, and we've had the discussion already, i- is that, that's something you, we might want to men, I think one of the things, and I'm looking at the deputy mayor, when we meet with the school district, is to thank them, because they do hire a lot of military spouses, actually, for, for various positions. And so, I, I don't know about teaching positions, but I think, I think that also includes teaching positions, but we might want to just remember that on Monday, to thank them for their efforts, uh, to hire spouses of, of, of military folks, so, and, and that we recognize that as an important part of, of what they do, and, and, and we thank them that, that they're doing that, because sometimes it is difficult for them to find work.
And, uh, for those of you who attended the JBLM tour, I understand, I recognize that, two things, one, that was definitely the epitome of drinking from a fire hose, like a thirty-six-inch fire hose. And then about ten minutes into the presentation, I was gonna say, okay, enough with the acronyms, but then that would've just slowed things down. Oh, Colonel, uh, Colonel Beckwith, yeah, he's a, yeah, he's a good, he's a good guy. So, um, but, yeah, but, but he wanted you to see everything, that was why, that, that was why, 'cause they're very passionate about the base and, you know, what they do there, so that's, 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 that's the reason, that's the reason why. Well, there was a couple, I was like, what the heck is that? I, yeah. And by the way, that airfield is, you know, almost ten thousand, over ten thousand feet long, it's one of the largest ones in the area, so that's a, that's a long airstrip, so, good size.
Okay, well, thanks, Deputy Mayor. Uh, it, it, just to follow up on Mr. Bokey's comment about, uh, employment for military spouses and things to do that.
to do that, I did, last week, go down to Olympia, and I did testify in favor of two bills that are looking to address that, so that as military families arrive, that spouses that have licenses in different professions that arrive, could be able to begin working Washington immediately, rather than the sometimes months, and even up to a year, to be able to get a Washington license to begin to work, and be able to go and do that. I was really encouraged that that committee chair said, we have got four bills that we're going to be doing hearings on, that all address the same issue, and that we're going to consolidate all that we hear, and we're going to come up with a bill that will at least move out of the House, to do that, to address that. And I was there, as the Veterans Legislative Coalition has, and the WDDA have a real interest in seeing that issue worked on, and being able to go and do that. There's one other bill that I think that we should take a look at, and we should perhaps address our lobbyists, and perhaps ourselves, to be able to take a position on, and this is, that's House Bill 2529, and this is a bill that, right now, our lobbyists are only monitoring, and the AWC is sort of neutral, but saying there are maybe some concerns. But this is a bill that is going to eliminate odd-number-year elections. And the idea is to push all the elections, both the federal, the state, the county, and all the municipal and special district elections, all into even-numbered years, to be able to go and do that. It's proposed by a representative in King County, that the rationale that's being posed is that it'll save all the small districts and cities money, because right now, the small districts and cities fund the, I mean, the, I really think the real windfall is going to come to counties, who only have to do, to do that. But, you know, if you put the elections of school boards, city councils, and things, and don't have them separately, what happens is, the discussion of local issues gets lost in the federal and state, and all the politicized debate to do that. And, you know, and this bill is being handled very strangely in the legislature, in that they're having an executive session hearing on it in a committee, before they have a public hearing session on it. That's kind of strange. But I think that it would be a good move on our part to, well, even though it wasn't mentioned in our legislative policy manual, to ask our, both voice to our legislators, but ask our lobbyists to voice that we are opposed to this bill and the moving of municipal elections into the same years with the regular state and things, to do that, just to save somebody a few bucks. And certainly, we're not, that's not in our, the negatives to that don't warrant the few bucks we would save. That, anyway, that's House Bill 2529, and if, you know, I sort of, because it's like having this executive session hearing on this Friday, you know, I guess I'd see if there is a consensus that we could ask the city manager to promote and communicate that feeling, as well as we could to do that.
Yes.
I think, I appreciate, and the Lakewood Lions Club appreciates the support that we got, and Mr. Bokey, Ms. Moss, attended our crab feed, which is our thing to do that, which is the stat. But it also brings up the fact that we're approaching the period of the year of when the Quality Communities Scholarship nomination is made by our youth council in conjunction with our mayor, and like in the past years, the Lions Club is willing to match whatever we as individual council members donate towards a scholarship, so that our nominee, whether they get the big states, the larger state scholarship, would at least gets a scholarship going forward. Last year, we collectively contributed $250, and Ms. Wilton from, is attending the UW, got $500 scholarship for being our nominee to the Quality Community Scholarship by AWC. So if you have any, to the extent that you want to make a donation to that sometime at one of our next two meetings, it'd be the time when I'm trying to get the Lions Club to be able to do that, you know?
Lakewood Lions Club?
Yeah, Lakewood First Lions Club. I did attend the South-South 911 meeting, there was some discussion as to whether to add the sheriff as a third representative of Pierce County to the board. There's only a discussion, there wasn't an actual item, it wasn't voted on, and there were some people that seemed to be in favor, some people who seemed to be not, what's going on? The new Public Safety Communications Center is at a 20% completion on its construction, and it is just slightly ahead of schedule, and is still on budget. And the process to get a replacement for Mr. Nidus as the new executive director is moving forward, that they are taking all of the applicants and distilling them down to a set of finalists, and there is a timeline that will lead to a selection before the end of February. And while the new, depending who is selected, they may not start on the 1st of March, Mr. Nidus is definitely planning to retire on the 28th of February. So, but there's certainly not going to be any significant, there's not going to be a gap caused by the recruitment process still going on, okay? Be able to go and do that. And lastly, I, you know, a number of months ago, you asked me to be a member on the, at the invitation of the city of Tacoma, on the advisory committee for their port subarea plan, to do that, and that has finally, is working its way around. The first meeting of that advisory committee is actually going to be on February 20th, that I did meet, along with Ms. Spear, with Carolyn Lake, an attorney for the port, who I gather is going around and is, was looking to, because Lakewood is joining the group of people that have been engaged in what's going to happen on the tide flats, to sort of give us the port's perspective, okay, about how they'd like that to proceed. This has been being talked about with interim regulations and a variety of things for approaching two years, so I was surprised to learn that the process itself hasn't gone anywhere, that they are, they are still negotiating what the scope of work for a consultant to do the work should be. But they're going to get there, they've decided that they're really looking, focusing on getting Burke as a consultant, the same consultant that worked with us on our downtown area plan, so that's encouraging. But they're envisioning certainly more than a year's worth of work to try to come up with that, and so we'll see how that goes on, and so I didn't escape completely from planning commission things. You know, that's all I have. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, sir. Ms. Moss?
I can be very brief, I did enjoy the tour today. I was amazed at the wetland that's out through that area, I had no idea, a lot of wetland in through there, so, I was surprised. I did enjoy the Lions Club, it was fun, I liked the band.
They are the good band.
Yeah, that's it.
I, too, enjoyed the JBLM tour, thank you so much for setting that up. I have my first liaison meeting tomorrow night, Parks and Rec, very, very excited. And I wanted to get clear, in case I missed something, on the PCRC final representation?
Oh, yeah, did we decide on that?
What did the boss say?
Well, LPA, same time, same night, PCRC meets, tomorrow, LPA.
Oh, okay.
So, they have this boss, tomorrow, me too.
Well, then you can start going. So, yeah, I will do youth council for this year, and planning commission. Didn't I agree, I did, I agreed to do planning commission, so, I don't know if they've got any big things going on this year. Okay, is that squared away, then?
We're squared away.
Didn't you say you wanted to be the representative to PCRC, and then I would be the alternate, or I'm happy with that?
No, I'm going to give up PCRC.
Okay.
Or you're going to give it up?
Because if I have to get, you're the alter.
I'll stay the alternate.
You'll stay the alternate. Because if I have to go twice a month to planning commission.
Oh, right.
And twice a month to youth council.
That's funny.
Okay, yeah.
So, council, our two members, and you're telling each other, and we still have to make a decision, you had about, the city manager said about who's going to be the representative, and it wasn't Seattle, it was P S R.
Thank you.
It was a busy week, always is a busy week. I had the EDV board meeting on Friday, the 24th, which was illuminating, lots of good stuff going on there, on the heels of a new five-year capital campaign to raise funds for the next five years of their work plan. The City of Lakewood is an investor, as are mostly municipalities in the area, so more to follow on that. Mr. Coffield sits on the board, I currently sit on the board, but he's a private member, as opposed to city manager who has the Lakewood seat, so more to follow on the work plan, but it was a good meeting. Then I left the Rotary Meeting, and I raced to meet Julie Smith from Pierce College, President of Pierce College, and she and I were a team to do the Point-in-Time Count here in Lakewood for the homelessness out on the streets. There were some 300 volunteers throughout the county, and we were provided a sector to serve in, and we were out in the streets from about 2:00 until 5:00, 5:30 on Friday, had the chance to meet with folks. It was, our time started when the clouds opened up, and so it was an absolute deluge at Friday at 2:00. It was sunny in the morning, I thought, hey, this is going to be awesome, 2:00, so it was crazy. But we got a chance to meet with about six people, everyone had a different story, a different background. The Point-in-Time Count is something that's done, I don't know if it's annually, is it annually? It is annually, and I think it's federal-funded, it comes down through the county, there is a specific survey that we have to use, so it was really interesting, the questions are a little bit intrusive, to be honest, about your background, this, that, and the other thing, but hopefully the data that comes out of that will be of help to all of us here in the county, but it was interesting chatting with some folks, it was, you know, heartbreaking with a couple of people, predictable with a few others, and just an interesting thing to do, glad to be a part of it. Later that evening, I went to the Qantas fundraiser at McGavick Center, it was a filled, packed room full of good people doing good things for Lakewood and Stilcom, so I was pleased to be part of that. Saturday, I will present, I guess, a little introduction to the MLK event, so I look forward to seeing those of you who can make it there, should be a nice event, I don't know all the parameters of it, but I'll look at the agenda, and hopefully it'll be as well-done as in years past, hopefully no longer than in years past, because they used to have it stretch out to an hour and a half, I think they reeled it into an hour, and hopefully it'll stay to an hour, so, that's the plan, cool. Yeah, they had every, in the vein of being, you know, diverse and all that sort of stuff, they had the Irish kids doing their dance, and the Simone kids doing their dance, and everybody's doing their dance, and it's, you know, 9:00 at night by the time we're done. Yeah, well-intentioned, though. Yep, good, great. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.